Okay. It's six thirty. We're gonna get this show on the road. That's right, right back to your seat. Good, thank you. So, good evening, everybody in the audience and online, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for South Burlington for January sixth, twenty twenty-five. Happy New Year, everybody. First meeting of the year. We will start with item one, which is a Pledge of Allegiance. And Jesse, would you please lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, Instructions on Exiting the Building in Case of an Emergency and Review of Technology Options. Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Thank you. So, for those in the audience, thank you for joining us tonight. If there's an emergency in the room, you can go out to the rear of the auditorium on the left or right-hand side, and then turn left or right to get outside. For those participating remotely, thank you for joining us as well. If you'd like to speak during any item on the agenda, you can turn your camera on, and the chair will call on you, or you can indicate your interest in speaking in the chat, and I will have the chair call on you. Other than that, we are not monitoring the chat for content.
Thank you, Jesse. Item three, which is Agenda Review. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of Agenda Items tonight? Well...
I would... Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna propose that based upon how quickly we go, that item twelve might wanna be pushed up above item ten, if we need to. Any... Any problem with that? No? Okay, just if we need to. Did you have something going on?
Well, and additionally, staff would respectfully request you-
Yes.
...remove item sixteen, which was a planned executive session to discuss our negotiation with the Afsmi union, and we are not prepared to talk about that.
So, we're striking item sixteen. Thank you. Now, we're at item four, which is Comments and Questions from the Public, not related to any items on the agenda tonight. Are there any comments from the public tonight, either online or in the audience? Could you please come up and... To the podium here, or at the table? And you'll find a button on that microphone. Just push it, make sure it's bright green. Okay. Bright green.
Now it's bright green.
And could you please identify yourself and where you live?
Sure. My name is Laura Di Maroni. I live at fifteen twenty Dorset Street. And I'm here to discuss some... I have a message from neighbors who are concerned about the extended shared-use plan to extend the bike path that's down, going down Dorset Street. And if I could read part of a letter that I sent to all of you to make it part of the public record, and then any questions that you might have. So, on December seventeenth, several neighbors met with Erica Quinlan, Tom De Pietro, the engineering consultant, and the outside council to discuss our concerns and questions about the proposed shared-use path on Dorset Street between Old Cross Road and Sadie Lane. Construction and completion of this plan and path are significant and make a great impact on our properties. Safety of path users, homeowners, and businesses along the path, the need for this section of the path, and the alternative locations of the path are our main concerns. We learned that the proposed plan was designated after a two thousand fifteen scoping study of residents indicated a need for this additional section. None of us were part of that study, or even knew about it. We tried to discuss these points. One, the designers failed to learn about the left-turn lane into Cider Mill Drive, which was scheduled to be built when Phase One of the development was completed. This intersection is heavily used. The turn lane used most of the city's right-of-way. Construction and completion of the proposed path along this turn lane will mean using more of the property owner's land, and it will lead to a significant decrease in the safety buffer between the path and Dorset Street. We were told that the total remaining width of right-of-way is twelve to thirteen feet. The path will use ten feet of it. The buffer is much too small and unsafe for path users, recognizing speed of traffic and the number of vehicles turning into the Cider Mill Development. Number two, Sadie Lane and the shared-use path, which now connects the existing Dorset Street path from Dorset Farms into city center and other neighborhoods, wasn't included in the plan. These now exist. Number three, the Willowbrook Lane development on the Lang property hasn't, hadn't been built. This is on the other side of Dorset Street. The city received a ten-foot strip of property for a future path when it was approved, but it hasn't been used. We asked if other options had been considered and offered an alternative route. If this link must be built, crossing Dorset Street to the west at Link Road and continuing on the west side to a Sadie Lane crossing connecting to the existing path will impact fewer properties, fewer driveway crossings, avoid the Cider Mill Drive turn lane, bypass safety issues at the mill and deli, and additional businesses at that property, and utilize the strip of land along the Lang development. Drainage and utilities need to be moved if the path is constructed as planned. This isn't an issue if the path is on the west side of the street. The existing path between Sadie Lane and Old Cross Road, excuse me, goes through a meadow and trees. It's beautiful, peaceful, and, most importantly, safe. Of extreme importance is that the demographics, population, and amount of traffic in South Burlington has changed greatly in the ensuing ten years. We sincerely are asking that the City Council put this project on hold until the following are done: A speed study of Dorset Street along the proposed section; a traffic study of the number of cars turning into and out of Cider Mill Drive; and a new resident scoping study to design a shared-use path that will better reflect South Burlington as it now exists. That's what we wrote. That's what we hope. We're really concerned about the safety, that will now be a big problem if that path is developed along that section of Dorset Street. And also the fact that there's already a link that connects the south end of South Burlington on Dorset Street all the way to city center, and also to the existing other bike paths that exist in South Burlington and in the neighborhood communities. That's what we wrote about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight? Come on down, please. Remember to identify yourself.
Sure. My name is Brock Lyman.
Could you repeat that?
Brock Lyman.
Thank you.
All right. And first off, thank you all for everything you do on this council. I really appreciate what you're doing for the city. I just wanted to add on to Laura's comments. Just, first off, I think in whatever plan we consider, living across from Willowbrook, that new neighborhood, I see, you know, citizens and the residents there crossing Dorset Street on a daily basis with no crosswalk. We all, I think, know how fast people drive on Dorset Street. It's a concern to me, and so whatever we do, some sort of crosswalk or some way to help those Willowbrook folks would be a good idea. So, something to consider there. Just to refer to, the study is ten or eleven years old. The city has changed dramatically. These pennies for path dollars are very important to improving the life, the lifestyle and the experience of the residents of South Burlington. Things have changed a lot since that study was done, and I can't help but think that there are other places in the city that could use this money that don't have paths at all. And so, to put this into a very small, you know, less-than-a-mile tract of land that's already serviced by a path on that side of the road, for the most part, it just seems like we could be spending this money to improve safety around the city and not necessarily more investment in the southeast quadrant. I know there's been a lot of talk online about how the money seems for public lands, public-use lands, has been going into the southeast quadrant. So, here's yet another instance where that money is going in there, and maybe could be used elsewhere. So, just wanted to throw that out there. But, most importantly, for my people in Willowbrook, please consider doing something for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience or online wanna make a comment? Okay, then. We will move on to item five, which is Counselors' Announcements and Reports on Committee Assignments and the City Manager's Report. Who would like to start tonight? Go ahead, Lori, thanks.
I'll jump right in, and I don't have any committee reports to make, which is quite pleasing at the start of the year, but I do have a start-of-the-year statement to read just to kick off the year. So, first, Happy New Year to you all. It was great to have a couple of weeks without meetings and the business of being on council. I'd almost forgotten how nice it was to be retired. The holidays were an opportunity for me to relax, visit with family, reflect on the past year, and look forward to what I hope we can accomplish in twenty twenty-five. Reflecting on the past year, I am grateful for the work, all the great work that the council, our amazing city staff, and our engaged community completed last year. Thank you, everybody. And looking forward, it's clear that we have many issues that we need to address, many more projects to complete than we have resources or available funds to cover. We have our work cut out for us. I've been reading and hearing conversations about affordability and the need to pull back on climate policy. I've read comments from our state legislators that climate policy is just costing us money, is aspirational, and that what Vermont does will make no difference. I strongly disagree with this. Anyone who believes in the science or the reporting from the IPCC knows that we are running out of time. In the words of Antonio Guterres, the U.N. Security General, humanity is on thin ice, and that ice is melting fast. Our world needs climate action on all fronts, everything, everywhere, all at once. We need to continue implementing the policies of our climate action plan and strive towards the goal set out in our city twenty twenty-four plan. I'm excited that, and I hope I pronounce this right, Maria Bettina Miguelz?
Bettina Miguelz.
Miguelz. Will join our team as our first Climate Action Manager on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and I look forward to working closely with her to move this agenda forward. This is an urgent call to all of us, and while we must balance our budgets and support and protect all of our citizens, if we do not take this challenge seriously and act swiftly, we and our future generations will pay dearly. Climate policy is not aspirational. It is critical to our future. This is not to bring us down, but rather to remind all of us that we need to work collaboratively and quickly, especially when we disagree, to ensure that we channel our resources towards improving the quality of life for all our residents. I'm gonna continue to work so we are able to look back at the end of this year and be grateful that we did all we can to protect our future. So, that's just my aspiration for the coming year, and I hope we can do the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Mike?
Yes, thank you. Like Laura, we know meetings over the holidays, so I think we're all thankful for that, but it's definitely exciting to get back into them this week, because as much as sometimes it's a challenge on juggling schedules, there's always something to learn, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to learn from our independent committees that come up with wonderful ideas. I did attend one meeting related to South Burlington. This is as the South Burlington Commissioner to GMT for the December Board Meeting, where we teed up the discussion for our tomorrow meeting, or actually our tomorrow retreat, in which we'll be going over the, one of the key decisions that defines how we go forward in terms of meeting this fiscal cliff that GMT is confronted about and which will affect our services. And this is whether to have the Rural Service split off from GMT and join on to other existing rural enterprises, providers, which two have stepped forward. So, we'll see if that decision goes forward. And I just mention it because this is about having GMT, if that happens, go back to its root of being just Chitting County-focused, being focused as an urban public transit provider, and if we do go that route, hopefully strengthen the opportunities of enhancing the services here. I was very happy to hear that the eleven bus will be routed through the city center now, which is, I think, a big plus for all of us as our city center comes together. But I think, as the council saw a couple months ago, the city came up with a proposal to actually connect the left, the Shelburne side of the city to the Wilston side of the city, meaning the roads. And I think if we go down this path, and I don't wanna prejudge how the board will decide tomorrow, but if we move down this forward, I think that that opportunity that I think this board, this council strongly endorsed, we'll have a good chance of coming back on the agenda the next couple of years. So, just wanted to share that, and it's good to see everyone again.
Thank you, Mike. Elizabeth?
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone as well. I can't recall if I reported this at a last meeting or not, but it bears re-reporting. But the Housing Committee did meet for the first time in its reconfigured state, and Nora Senical was voted as the Chair of that committee. And they laid out, really worked hard to lay out a year's worth of Agenda Items, a lot of it looking at baseline data on housing needs and also the function of the Housing Trust. So, there's a pretty robust agenda set out for that committee, and I look forward to continuing to serve as liaison. Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Andrew?
Yeah, so the past few weeks have also been quiet for me with respect to official council business. Lori and I did meet with Laura Di Maroni and her spouse about the proposed shared-use path and their concerns. The conversation did raise some things that I think are useful to talk about and think about to ensure we're really doing the best thing we can for the city with respect to that proposal. I had to miss the Sherris School meeting, unfortunately, so I will be learning about the budget requests later on at the same time as my fellow counselors. In the absence of a whole lot to report, I do also wanna take a moment to reflect on our past year. Proud of many things in the city. We have a terrific staff, the city's well-run, our budgets are tight. We're nationally recognized as a wonderful and safe place to live. We have a lot to be proud of. Really proud of the climate change action we're able to take. It's really hard to do it at the municipal level. We're really small, so we have little impact our own. Our budgets are tight, affordability is a real concern. Notwithstanding that, we're now a national leader in requiring new buildings to use solar, renewable energy, and to provide for EV charging. Our city plan recognizes addressing climate change as a principal lens through which policy decisions must be made, and we will soon have a new Climate Actions Manager on staff. The argument that we need not act until others do is a mirage. If no one acts until everyone acts, our children have no future. We all must act and do what we can. The argument we can't afford acting means we just leave our children a bigger and bigger environmental debt that they will be unable to repay. I intend to keep doing all I can to ensure we reduce greenhouse gas emissions and continue to be a leader in addressing climate change.
Thank you, Andrew. I attended one city, well, two city meetings between the last City Council meeting and this one. One was a Public Arts Committee meeting, and also last Friday, the city manager and all of her staff met with all of our state legislators, and it was a really constructive conversation about issues that the city's concerned about. For example, public safety, Chief Burke talked about the problems with the judiciary and the revolving door, and people getting arrested and then cited and then being released, and just, they just come, they steal, and come back, and come back, and how can the legislation work with that? Martin Lalonde was there, and he's on that committee. I think they haven't really nailed down all the committees are gonna be on it. He'll probably be on that one again, but there was that, and there was also a lot of stormwater talk about TMDLs and changes to standards and the three-acre rule. We talked about GMT and the service and the cost, and also the local sales option tax and the type of tax transparency that we would like to have in the future from the Tax Department so that we can generate better data for our economic development plans, right? We also talked about the property tax issues, especially around the education funding mechanisms and what they might do about it. We don't know, they don't know. I know, so there's some studies being done right now, but it was just an opportunity for, and maybe you're gonna talk about this as well, but for the staff to point out those issues that affect the city and asking the legislators to look closely at some of those items. I also had a very nice Christmas. I was able to go cross-country skiing once, which was great, but then the snow melted, but then it came back, you know, this weekend. But I took the opportunity to go up on the VNCC off of Golf Course Road and go up around the backside, on the eastern side, and the snow conditions were beautiful. It was excellent. As a side note about climate change, my employer finally added ten charging stations for electric vehicles. They're not open for the employees quite yet, but they're being tested by a couple of key people, and I can say that they work because they, those Teslas were sitting there all day long. And finally, I'd like to announce, if there's no doubt, Tim Barrett is running for reelection this year for the three-year seat, the one that I'm in now, this seat. I'm running again for it, so thank you very much. That's all I have. Jesse?
Thanks. So, just, I thank you for talking about the delegation meeting. For the council, I just wanted to share that in the community, we had a really robust turnout for that meeting. We're really pleased that so many of our state reps and senators could attend that briefing. And I wanna be clear, the council, one of the things we talked about with them is that there's two different types of advocacy the city does. There's staff advocacy on the municipal operation side of things, so how do bills affect EMS or stormwater or the things for which you hire experts to administer? And then there's the political advocacy that you all do from the council's perspective to the delegation, and want to be very clear with them that there are two types of ways that they will likely interact with us, but really pleased with our delegation turnout and thank them and the Chair for his time. We've actually had a quite busy few weeks with budgets and annual reports and HR interviews and Longview and many other items that are on your agenda that we'll talk about later on. But the exciting new thing for tonight is that our new website will officially launch on January sixteenth. We are purposely doing that after you approve a budget to send to the voters, so that's not to get confused with public hearings. But Andy Boombard, Communications Manager, and our department heads have done an amazing job building out what I think is a really beautiful site, and hopefully will be much more attuned to how people access municipal government than our current site. So, more to come on that. Thanks.
So, no more pop-up every time I go to that webpage asking me if I wanna be joined. Put my email in. Please take that away. I don't know if it bugs other people, it bugs me. All right. Going on to item number six, which is the Consent Agenda. We have item A, which is Consider and Sign Disbursements. Item B, Accept the Following Easements for Construction and Future Maintenance of the Dorset Street Shared Use Path Between Old Cross Road and Sadie Lane and Associated Drainage and Utility Infrastructure, a combination of permanent and temporary easements on parcel zero five seven zero dash zero one four eight zero granted to the city by warranty deed signed April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And item C, Receive the October and November twenty twenty-four financials. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Move to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to have discussion about B briefly.
Do you wanna poll B or just wait for the vote?
I don't mind voting for it, but I'd like to have some discussion around it.
Well, we can, when we call for discussion, we'll do that. Is that right?
Yeah.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about any of these items?
Regarding the easements for the Dorset Street Shared Use Path, I'm very much in favor of securing easements and getting our city ready to be able to move forward with this in the future. I think that we have some work still to do to make it so that the property owners that about this project have an opportunity to address some of the issues that they have and see if we can perhaps find solutions that might improve the overall implementation of the plan. Having missed out on a lot of the legwork that's been done for years by staff, I don't wanna be Johnny-come-lately to this, but I think it's important for it to be, have another look at to before we move forward. So, I just wanted to put that out as my concern moving forward with it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items?
Yeah, so echoing Lori, having met with Laura and her spouse, I wouldn't mind the opportunity, I don't know if it's a full council, some subset, to look at the map and the path and just throw out some things and just make sure that we get comfortable that the current plan is really the best plan. There may be some things that make sense to adjust, there may not. So, I wouldn't mind that opportunity. I don't know when or how we should do that. Perhaps, I agree that we, I think we walked away from the Active Transportation Meeting. I think, at least in, three of us here, thought there wasn't a holistic, yet closed, version of what makes the best sense in terms of putting together this final network, perhaps a way to, to address this issue and just be sure everything's looked at and every voice has at least had the time to share their perspective. Perhaps we can do it in a holistic way instead of just the Dorset Parkway.
We can do that, too, Mike. I do think that this particular thing that's on our agenda now, we're actively seeking easements as we speak, has maybe a little more priority and wind in its back, but I agree that when we get the plan, there'll be a lot to look at, but I wouldn't mind focusing on this in particular.
Is there an agenda item for this in the future?
Yep, so both of these items are on your February third agenda.
February?
Third.
Third, okay, good. So, we will discuss this in the future.
And I'm assuming that Public Works staff will be here so we can ask some of these questions? Thank you, guys.
Are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, it's unanimous. And we're gonna move on to item seven, which is Discussion. Receive a Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Budget Request from the Safe Roots to School Task Force with Susan Grasso. She's online, I see. Oh, she's right here. Somebody's online as well. Oh, okay. Why don't you come sit down and be more comfortable, probably, right? Make sure that green light is on on the mic. Yeah, yeah.
Susan, are you able to share your slides there? Or do I need to make you a host? Oh, there you go.
And is your microphone on? Bright green? Just push the button in the bottom.
Okay, can you hear me?
That's good, yeah.
Great. Okay, well... So, my name is Susan Grasso. I work in the Complete Streets Program at Locomotion, and I'm really excited to be here tonight to share with you the work that the Safe Roots to School Task Force has been doing over this past year. For those of you who are not familiar with Locomotion, we are Vermont's only statewide walking and biking advocacy organization, and the Complete Streets team staff primarily works with local communities to help them advance their goals around making their communities more walkable and bikeable. As you know, the task force is a collaboration between the city of South Burlington and the South Burlington School District, and Locomotion was asked to facilitate that group, which is why I'm sitting here tonight talking to you about the Safe Roots to School Task Force work. So, this slide shows the members of the task force and their roles. The task force has been meeting monthly for over a year now. We have also spent a lot of time outside of our monthly meetings doing work to advance our projects. We have had about an average of ten folks attending our meetings, and we have over forty people on our email distribution list who receive our minutes and agendas and invitations. The tasks that we are undertaking are listed here. So, our first task is to develop safe walking and biking routes to each of the five schools. Our second task is to support the development of school-based Safe Roots to School teams, who can then organize education and encouragement events at the local level, or at the local school level. And then our third task is, once we've made sufficient progress on the first two, is to make a decision or recommendation about whether or not this collaboration should continue. Further into the future. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the things that we've accomplished this past year. We jumped right in at the, the beginning of the year, looking at the Dorset Street repaving project. So specifically Phase Four of Dorset Street is planned for repaving. And there was interest in the community to take a look at this project to see if it could be leveraged to include. Addressing some longstanding pedestrian and cyclist concerns. So we participated in what I would call a local concerns meeting on January twelfth. We organized a walk-bike audit on January seventeenth, which involved several members of the middle and high school community. We participated in a review of recommendations made by the consultant for this project, which included. Constructing a school zone in this area that was installed earlier this summer. And it also includes consolidation of two mid-block crosswalks, adding a pedestrian refuge island. Retaining flashing beacons and crosswalk lighting. And the project also included an add-on, uh, street lighting analysis, which ultimately concluded. Recommending sixteen streetlights to be added in this area. That project was bid out and has been estimated to cost two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So this is work in the same project that is sort of an add-on. So I'll be talking more about a budget request to move forward with that. Rolling that, that street lighting into the Dorset Street work, which is planned to take place summer twenty twenty-five. We also, we were able to finally test a safe, safe routes to school. That has been in the planning stages at the Bike Ped Committee for a couple of years now. This route goes from Elson Parkway at Williston Road and works through neighborhood streets to the middle and high school complex. We. This slide here shows different elements that we use to denote this route. So this is a route that students and community members are already using. It was a goal of the Bike Ped Committee that we test this route and make it sort of more formalized as a safe route to school. We did this by adding some wayfinding signage. We constructed a few neck downs in a couple of key locations on some of the wider neighborhood streets in order to. Raise awareness with people driving cars that they're, they can expect people walking and biking on these streets. And also to help slow down motor vehicle traffic. We put in a temporary crosswalk in a needed spot on Barrett, Barrett Drive. And we also put in a temporary in-street pedestrian sign at the Heinsberg Crosswalk. And some on-street pedestrian and cyclist pavement stencils. So we tested this route for about six weeks or so. We paired this with a community survey. In which we received fifty-one responses and we asked several questions in the survey. The, about seventy-five percent of respondents indicated support for making this route more permanent by using more permanent materials. Using more visually attractive materials, so that will be something that we'll be undertaking this next year to move forward with that. We did hear from the community that they had some concerns with, with using the bumpouts that we tested. Because they, they were concerned about students riding bikes who might then be directed into the middle of the street. So we'll be looking at other ways of calming traffic in place of those bumpouts. Probably our most significant project, biggest project that, that we advanced this year was to. Identify and map areas of concern. For each school, within a one-mile radius of each school, when thinking about the routes that kids take to get to their community school. This was a big undertaking. The way we approached this problem was to do a first-level analysis at the task force level. Where we looked at each school, looked at the one-mile boundary around it. We assumed that each residential property could at some point in time house a child. And so we looked at the different ways that kids would get to their community school. And we identified for all of those homes in that area, what barriers, what areas of concern exist. For those kids or those parents to feel comfortable letting their kids walk or bike to their school. The, all of those projects that, so we, we were able to do this for all of the schools, again, kind of at this high level at the task force level. Tom DePietro and his staff did a great job of mapping all of those areas of concern on a G I, an interactive GIS map. Green shot of which is shown here. So the greenish-yellow circles represent the different school campuses. The shaded land areas represent the school catch, catchment areas. And the red diamonds represent the issue of, issues of concern that were identified. If you go to the map and you click on the red diamond, you'll be able to get a description of exactly what that concern is. So our next step is to go to the individual school communities who know their communities best. And ground truth the work of the task force. Basically, what did we miss? Do we have things in here that really aren't problematic? And just get that validation and information at that hyper-local level. We were able to complete that work for one school this past year. That was Chamberlain School. This slide shows all the different ways that we engage with Chamberlain School. From PTO presentations to attending different school events. We got information out through their school newsletter and we paired all of this with a community survey to get input from, from the community about. Issues of concern walking or biking to their school. We received about seventy responses. We took all of this information then, put it all together. And we ended up with the list of thirty issues of concern, again, within a one-mile radius of Chamberlain School. About walking and biking to school. So what we're working on this next year will be to do that same type of analysis with the remaining schools in South Burlington. We also, well, DPW has an intersection study underway at the intersection of Market Street and Attilio Drive. So near Rick Marquardt Central School. You're well aware of the concerns that have been raised at that intersection around multimodal travel, especially around bus turning movements. So we are following that process and we'll be engaging in those conversations as ideas are put forward. So that's underway. We're also taking a look at crossing guard needs in South Burlington. As part of our outreach to school, we're curious to know if school communities feel like they need additional crossing guard help. We are well aware that there are existing crossing guards positions in South Burlington right now. And the school district is having a very difficult time filling those positions. So we've been trying to work on strategies to help support them. Hopefully more to come about that in the next year. The school district is planning to repave the high school and middle school parking lot. There are concerns about traffic circulation patterns at the parking lot during arrival time, particularly at dismissal time. So we're hoping to take advantage of this repaving opportunity to make multimodal travel in that area safer and more intuitive. So these are some of the things on our agenda regarding task one for this upcoming year. Regarding task two, we're really hoping this year to build those Safe Roots to School teams at the local level. And we're also beginning conversation with Adam App and the Recreation and Parks Department. Exploring the idea of mounting a citywide youth bike education encouragement event. That could possibly become like a signature event for South Burlington around this topic. So a lot of excitement around there and hopefully more to share in the next couple of months. So this brings me to our funding request from the task force. We have three that we have put in front of you. The first one is really to, about the fiscal year twenty-five budget. We are hoping that you will direct DPW to go ahead and add the street light. The sixteen recommended streetlights to the Dorset repaving project, again, which is to take place this summer. So the cost for that is two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. This should go a long way to making that area of Dorset Street a lot more visible for kids walking and biking to and from school, as well as other community members. But students are often doing that during the school months when. We don't get a lot of daylight, so they're, they're coming home from school during the dark and going to school in the dark. So that would be a high priority for the task force. Regarding the fiscal year twenty-six budget, we have identified two high-level concerns. One is to fill a very important sidewalk gap, which is on Richard Terrace between Patchen Road and Chamberlain School. There's about eleven-hundred-foot sidewalk gap there that really prevents most students who are up in that northwest corner of Chamberlain School. Being able to access Chamberlain School under their own power. The cost for engineering and constructing that sidewalk would, is estimated to be about four hundred thousand dollars. This project was identified as the top concern for Chamberlain School leadership. The second project that really rose to the top of the task force list was addressing concerns on White Street. Of those thirty concerns that were identified for Chamberlain School, twelve of them are actually located on White Street between Patchen Road and Airport Parkway. These concerns range from, you know, speeding traffic, motor vehicle non-compliance at crosswalks. So people driving, not respecting the crosswalk when people are trying to use it. We heard from residents who would like to be able to cross White Street to get onto, there's only a sidewalk on the southern side. So people living on the northern side would like to be able to safely cross to get over to the sidewalk so they can walk to school. So this desire for more crosswalks on White Street. We heard from people concerned about the bike lane being too narrow, being unprotected. We heard from people concerned about bicycle pedestrian conflicts on the sidewalk. So a whole slew of concerns about the White Street corridor. So we would like to ask you to support developing a safety improvement plan for the corridor. And we estimate that would include hopefully some preliminary design as well, and that would, is estimated to be seventy thousand dollars. So overall, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars that the task force is requesting to be included in this year's budget. As far as potential funding sources for that. We are hoping that we could look to the ARPA-inspired funds as a potential, potential source of resources for that. As far as funding for the street lighting on Dorset Street, it's our understanding that there is funding available in the DPW budget to cover that cost. So I'm going to just end with this slide, why Safe Roots to School. I think you're all pretty aware yourselves about why it's so important. And all of the benefits that accrue to students and to communities when kids are allowed to be able to get to school under their own power. I've listed some of them here, just going to run through them quickly. But certainly establishing healthy walking and biking habits and experiences when you're young are skills that you can rely on as you age. Developing personal independence is something that we're increasingly aware of, that we need to provide for our young people. Reducing transportation burden on families. I certainly remember being in that situation where I felt like I spent all my time in the car, shuttling my kids around. Allowing kids to make personal connections to their city and to their neighborhoods is really important. So they don't always see life from a motor vehicle, that they get to experience it and really establish a geographical understanding. And connections to the places that they live. And then, of course, we know today that giving kids some activity before they start the, the school day is really beneficial to, to their learning. So these are some really important reasons why the task force hopes that you'll support their requests. And thank you for letting me share this information with you, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Thanks very much for that. A lot of good stuff in there. I just want to relate that I used to walk four miles a day. Twice round trip to Green Street School from my house on Western Avenue in Brattleboro when I was in grade school.
Uphill both ways?
It was up hills both, both ways and in waist-deep snow. But I used to go home for lunch, so, and the same thing when I lived in Bethesda, it was about three-quarters of a mile to school and I would walk home for lunch each time. So it, it, it is important to be able to, to perambulate as you want to.
And those of us of a certain generation probably remember doing those things more than kids have had the chance to do today, so I appreciate that. And I would like to say Councilor Tannock has really pushed us to expand our, our boundary from one mile to two miles, but we're trying to break this up in manageable chunks.
So I'll start first. I have a question about that FY twenty-five request for the sixteen additional streetlights. Or can you tell me more about them and, and Tom, do you want it? Okay, he's going, you come on down.
I have a question to piggyback on that, which is, is it possible to get the in-ground infrastructure in the twenty twenty-five budget? And then the above-ground installations in the twenty twenty-six budget, or does it, does it all need?
You're complicating my question.
Good evening, everybody. Tom DePietro, Public Works Director. And so happy to talk more about the Dorset Street lights if you'd like. Should I give a little background on where we're at the moment? I think that might help answer some of this. So we had moved forward with engineering for a variety of pedestrian-scale things on Dorset Street, primarily the crossing. But as part of the contract, the consultant, we also looked at lighting. So they went and they took some information from the survey, they created a lighting model. And they found that basically the lighting on Dorset Street in this area met the minimum requirements that we looked for. So it could be improved, but it did meet some minimum foot candle requirements. Simultaneous to all that, we are not wanting to miss our opportunity to bid this project out so that the paving work could be done in a very tight window, which is to say during summer break. So we didn't want to get behind, so we bid the light piece out with the paving, kind of a little ahead of what we normally would, I would say, so that we could keep it moving together. So we do have a good price for it, the two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. It's not far off the engineer's estimate. And that's good for about thirty days from we opened it last month, so coming right up on it right now. That's not to say they wouldn't extend it a little bit if we asked. But so we, we have a price for the whole thing, I guess, as far as going underground or above. And it's very much separate, I would say, from the paving work and the crosswalk work. So there is some lighting, of course, involved with the crosswalk, but these lights are on kind of the backside of the sidewalk. Again, sixteen of them between Kennedy and Aspen. Eight of those are on school district property. Two of them are on city property and the other six are spread across three different private properties.
What height are these?
Oh, I have to look at the plans again, Tim. My, me and my memo, I can pull that up.
Just a reminder, this memo and the study Tom's talking about was part of your December sixteenth council meeting, the Dorset Street paving meeting. And I sent it around, it should be at the top of your inbox now. I sent it around earlier today as well, if you want to look at the study. While Tom's, I will continue to talk slowly while Tom looks for his height number.
I see twenty-two-foot, six-inch poles were used for this purpose.
Are they going to be cobra heads or more of like a city, urban, they're going to be tilt or a cap with a, like the ones here? Or? Shorter version.
Thank you. Shorter version of the cobra heads.
You said twenty, twenty-two?
Sixteen total.
Twenty-two feet high?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, with sixteen of them, okay, because the ones that are out there now are like really high.
Those are, those are street lighting. Those are primarily geared towards the street. I mean, they do provide sunlight, obviously, from the study on the sidewalk, but they're not really pedestrian scale geared towards the sidewalk.
And so you bid out twenty-two feet height?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just, I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, like if you walk through like a neighborhood, right, then most of those poles are fourteen feet high. If they're gaslight style, I don't know. I mean, obviously you bid what was more appropriate for that area, so, but they'll. Okay, and so, and like. Susan said, you, this fits into the current paving budget was included in that.
So, yeah, in the memo I sent you, the last meeting, I laid out what's in the paving budget. And so we currently have about one point. And so we currently have about one point three million in there, nine hundred fifty thousand for FY twenty-five. And then we've got about a hundred and twenty from FY twenty-four carry forward. Two hundred from FY twenty-three surplus and FY twenty-four surplus allocation of a hundred, so we've sort of built this up over time. To pay for this section of Dorset Street and the pedestrian improvements. And it appears as if we have enough built up where we could also cover, you know, the paving, the crosswalk and the lights.
And the power will come from existing streetlights?
Yeah, well, it's in the plan table, we'll pull it from somewhere existing.
Okay, so that's that's not a huge problem, I mean, okay, all right, who else has questions?
So the two hundred and eighty-six, is that already incorporated into the budget that we've been working with, or is this to be added?
This is in your FY twenty-five budget, your existing budget, this year's budget. And and all the other funding streams that Tom just mentioned that we have been putting pulling together over last year.
So I don't have any more questions about that, I do have a question about the. About the pilot project.
Before we move from lighting. Just, so Tom, is it your perspective that? The minimum is insufficient and this is money well spent? So, again, we're going by engineering standards, this is what I can answer for you, Councilor Chalnuck. And so there's no clear standard, that's one that we had our consultant look for and find, I can cite it for you more specifically if you'd like. I can tell you, we've heard anecdotally from a lot of folks, whether parents, the school, or, you know, school administrators indicated their support for this.
Tom, I had a question relative to, I, you know, I'm looking at the two, the the two data sheets that are in the report. Show kind of the technical measurement of luminescence with the current and then what the proposed would be, is that accurate?
I think you're looking at this sheet, if I'm holding up.
I mean, I guess one of the questions I had is that, is that a material difference, given that? One of the issues with the meeting, the minimum standard now was the height of the trees. So that is something that would be variable and continue, and then I kind of wondered. You know, given our meetings here in the evening, I drive down Dorset a lot. And does it have any implications to the lighting requirements for the balance of Dorset past the area that is proposed? And I know there's a timing issue of sort of coordinating lighting with paving. But I just wondered, is 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 this also gonna start to become a need? You know, it's a quarter of a million dollars, almost three hundred for that section, sixteen lights. Is the same issue all the way down Dorset?
So I can tell you, when we had the engineer put this on, all the existing lights on a plan, they came up with about a half a foot candle. Right, of the average along that corridor, that's how you measure it, and in some spots it's a little darker, some spots it's brighter. There's also a measure here of sort of the the difference, the uniformity of that, you don't want a really bright spot and then a really dark spot. Cuz that makes the dark spot feel darker, right? So both those things sort of factor in.
And those are material with the recommended changes?
And so I think if I remember correctly, the average goes up to almost one and a half foot candles if we were to put these lights in. So it'd be significantly brighter on the sidewalk in those areas, and then there's a nice map that he provided, the consultant, he. As part of that as well, kind of a before and after. As far as part B to that question was, does this mean we have to go up Dorset Street further? Yeah, I guess that is a policy decision, that's not a project we have in mind. This, if we're able to get the easiness we need and put all sixteen of these lights in, it would certainly be brighter. In that stretch from Aspen down to Kennedy on Dorset. Significantly brighter than, you know, the the strip down Kennedy. I know that because there's not many lights there, but we we didn't look at what the lighting is as you go further north on Dorset. Some of this doesn't take into account either lights on buildings, so we're just looking at the light in the right of way is the way we evaluate this too. And it's obviously gets brighter as you head further north towards Wilston Road on Dorset.
Laurie, did you wanna continue?
I just wanted to ask a question about, are we done with the lighting? Just had a question about the the pilot that you did, and if you have any statistics on how. Much it was used, whether kids found it something that they liked doing. Whether it looks like something that. Can catch on or whether it was there and nobody was using it, I'm just wondering.
I thought that's that's a good question, we did not. Do any sort of counts, so we don't, we don't have data to to that effect. We really relied on the survey to get input from, you know, neighbors in the area. And get their feedback about whether it was a worthwhile project.
Thank you, but we we did have a question where, right, folks, many folks, the vast majority said that they. Thought the project was good and would like to see it be permanent.
Yeah, yeah, I was saying about three quarters of our.
I was just wondering if there was any indication of use and how much it got used, and is it still?
Folks that responded whether they they used they used it.
Yeah, I think we did ask that question, I don't have the percentage, and we also, of course, have the demographics from. Our respondents in terms of how many, what percent were kids, what percent were parents, that kind of thing, so.
Counselor Smith, we can share those results too, if you hadn't seen them, we'd be happy to, you know.
Okay. And. That pilot got taken down, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Mike, do you have any questions?
I was wondering on the sidewalk gap issue. We seem to have three things, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, that are looking at sort of the gaps in our multi-use path or sidewalks. We have the active transportation plan, which would be presented at the February third State Council meeting. We have the sidewalk survey that I guess has been completed and now you're waiting for the data. And and this school routes, safe school routes to school. Is there gonna be overlap, is is there benefit to waiting to see, since all three are pretty much close to finance, to see the degree that there's overlap in? And to see where there are maybe cost savings or just in terms of sequencing?
No, I I appreciate you bringing that up, the amount of work we're doing on this topic in the city, and that it's all happening at once too, right? So I think all these different efforts are identifying needs. And we need to circle back here and figure out a way to move forward in a manageable and smart way. So right now, I think we have established a need here on the safe routes to school side, this missing section of sidewalk. On the active transportation plan is gonna also establish additional needs, right? And so how do we put all that together and weigh it against each other, I think is the big question that's coming up. And then, of course, the sidewalk maintenance, which we have that data, we've looked at it, but now we need to take all that information and turn that into a plan. And figure out how we're gonna address some of those sections.
I know you mentioned on the FY twenty-five, you're running against a bid deadline. As you said, but I I would assume therefore then the sidewalk gap, that's not the case, this is longer term planning. Is there any benefit in waiting to, before we make a judgment on allocations of funds, cuz the money will sit. You know, in there, in this fund, until we make a decision to wait to see what comes in from the sidewalk. And from the active transportation and and to be sure that we, as you said, have a rational approach to maximize biggest biggest impact on how we do this.
But I think that's the question in front of council. To discuss tonight and to be decided by council. I can tell you, as far as the Richard Terrace sidewalk gap goes, it's very close to Public Works, so I'm familiar with it, and it is it is a missing chunk. Of sidewalks, certainly, how that would stack up against the other identified gaps in sidewalks or other needs, you know. We we have to develop a method to figure that out. I can tell you that Richard Terrace sidewalk gap is not in our existing capital plan. So if council were to choose to move this forward, we would have to come up with the staff time in addition to these resources that you'd need to identify to move that forward. And that breaks out, you know, maybe about fifty thousand dollars in engineering and design and the rest for construction. And that's, again, I wanna note, that's just an estimate we put together based on similar sidewalk projects we're working on. It looks as if we can fit this in existing right-of-way. If we were to determine, oh, for whatever reason, we need to go out and get right-of-way, I think you're aware of how that can extend the project timeline.
Last question then, Tom, but if you guys, if we did say wait, look at all three. And then come back with sort of based on assessment priority lists or identify overlaps where we get more bang for the buck. When would that be, I mean, are we missing opportunities by waiting so you can bring all the data together or?
I think what we would need to do is, I'm trying to think, what would the longest deadline, I think that would be the active transportation plan deadline. And maybe Erica would shout that over my shoulder when that's due. Or she could come to the mic. So I think if we're trying to line it up, that would be the last piece of information to be finished up here to do it that way.
Hey there, Erica Wallen, Deputy Director of Capital Projects. It's on, oh, sorry, I'm not used to this, you gotta be closer to this one. And next week, your council meeting next week, as part of the UPWP applications. You will be seeing one request for that, that is kind of a reconciliation and prioritization of a lot of these efforts. So that is part of the plan here, that won't necessarily add the active transportation projects. Those are some of the larger scale connections that are being made, some of the smaller gaps through safe routes to school. And the maintenance requests and public requests, those are the ones that we're really gonna be trying to reconcile and prioritize in that effort.
I mean, I I would look to staff recommendation, it feels to me like the Richard Terrace sidewalk. Should be one of the potential paths that's folded into the active transportation plan, there is a prioritization metric. In that plan that looks to, you know, how many folks would the path serve and cost benefit, and this should be. Part of that, I don't know if that metric. You know, takes into account, which I think it should, distance to school. You know, school priorities, et cetera, but but once we get that prioritization right in the active transportation plan. Then I think that should tell us, you know, what we work on first, second, and third, that would, that's how I would see it. So if you're looking into staff, then I think that would be the timeline you'd be looking at. Right, is the UPWP work and that active transportation plan for staff to give you a thorough recommendation. I don't have that recommendation for you this evening, I want you to prioritize.
Is there a cross, crosswalk across Patchen or Richard Terrace connects there? At this time?
Yes, and it has an RFB.
It does. It does, okay, okay, so at least that little piece.
There and then to have the sidewalk gap is significant. And I think also, just to reiterate the point, that this was the really topmost project identified by the school itself. I think it's just something to keep in mind also.
And you think that the road, the city has enough right-of-way from the center of the road to encompass this work?
A desktop analysis level, Counselor Barrett, so we gotta get out, the first thing we would do is do some survey and figure out if we can fit that five-foot sidewalk in with some green space. And we know after that for sure.
It's a pretty long piece of sidewalk, it's fourteen hundred feet?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty? Trying to think how long the one was on Joy Drive that goes up to the dialysis center, it's probably shorter, anyway, okay.
So in terms of. I wanna just, I hope and encourage that all of these pieces will get fed into the active transportation plan. And that the active transportation plan will take these into account as well as what's happening with the. Open space and Parks Master Plan, so that we end up with an integrated. Plan for what our future is gonna look like for active transportation. Short of that, if these pieces are all done independently, we're gonna end up with a patchwork instead of a really comprehensive plan, so.
In in terms of White Street, Erica, that what you mentioned, with that, the list of priorities and some kind of smaller. Infrastructure projects, would would that encompass White Street improvements already, or? Are you talking about the White Street safety improvement aspect of this?
So my understanding is that. The safety improvement plan is slightly different than saying this is the infrastructure we want, this would identify it. But the White Street project that has been submitted on our public traffic evaluation request. So that is one that would be considered in that UPWP effort of prioritizing those projects. But not necessarily identifying exactly which type of infrastructure would go in.
Sorry, just just to parse that a little bit, so I I know that the the task force has identified twelve particular items. Along White Street, there may be more, there may be less, there may be other recommendations from a consultant. That the task force in the school thinks would make sense to implement to improve safety. Would it be the case that some of all of those twelve would already be in our hopper as things that we're looking at or or not? Yeah, so one of the efforts we left out earlier, I think, was the traffic evaluation requests that the public will submit. And that's where we have that ranked list already of projects in the city, and yes, some aspects of White Street are on that list already. And so there probably, there will be some overlap between what we identify here, some of the requests that have already been made within that list. I guess I'm trying, I mean, I I would support a study. But I I also think maybe it makes sense to first see what comes out of the list, what. What we already have in the hopper, what we already think makes sense to do, so we're not stepping on each other's feet here, right?
And I'd just like to clarify that what we have come up with really are issues of concern. In some cases, they're really clear projects, like the sidewalk gap on Richard Terrace, in other cases, they're concerned. So what the solution, infrastructure solution or otherwise might be, is yet to be determined, which is why this is the second item here is. Framed as basically a scoping study and maybe.
Susan, I guess, does it make sense to you to like first see what the recommendations are with respect to White Street? Out of the work that Erica and Tom are doing, then maybe revert back to, okay, well, do do we need a study or what what what's already? I think the the way the White Street work ranked in that list, it didn't bring it to the top at the moment. And I don't know, I don't recall offhand where it landed in that list. So if we were gonna wait for it to come up in our existing traffic request evaluation list, it might be a year or two before we had the funding. To go and look at these sections and those specific concerns that are in that list. This was, just generally speaking, safe routes to school, task force looked at the area at Chamberlain and said, okay. There's a number of different things on White Street we'd like to look at to improve the condition condition there, does that help clarify that at all? And try to explain more, it's just so many different overlapping efforts, I guess.
Really feels like all of these need to be pulled together and coordinated so we can see a clear picture of. The White Street Safety Improvement Plan, how it overlays with the safer, how it overlays with the. Active Transportation Plan and with the sidewalk assessment that you've done, so we can. Get a comprehensive picture of, this is everything that's come forward and these are how we wanna prioritize them, feels like we're a little.
So, if I can jump in for a minute, we agree, and just let's note that all of these efforts that we're talking about tonight. Whether it's safe routes to school or the active transportation plan or the sidewalk inventory or whatnot. Are things that the council has asked us to go and look at because of a community concern. So we would love to have some breathing room to do that kind of analysis, right now, we're trying to move all the different initiatives forward that you all have asked us to move forward. So let us hold this in mind in the future when we have multiple overlapping planning efforts going on simultaneously.
Back to, I guess, my initial question, given that breathing space, which was I suggested. What would what would be the timeframe in which you would all need to bring these three threads, let's call them, together? To weave us a a full picture, so we can make a rational maximalist benefit decision for the community?
I I think that goes to the UPWP work that we submitted, so last year's requests were just starting now, right? So this year's request, we'd start this time next year, is that accurate?
So we are submitting at the end of January, the FY twenty-six requests. And they start typically in the fall, ideally in the fall of that fiscal year. So it would be October, November, but some of them, it takes a while to get the scope of work developed. So some of which we are just kicking off now, that are the FY twenty-five UPWP projects.
And just a reminder, UPWP, which is, I think, a crazy acronym, is the Chitting County Regional Planning Commission Unified.
Planning Work Program.
Work Program, which enables us to. CCRPC, Regional Planning Dollars, to help support these efforts, so we're not paying for them locally.
So, one comment for you, Jesse, if I as a counselor am pushing things forward. In a way that is gonna cause them to come to us in a somewhat fractured way. And you see that in advance, I would love to get a knock on the head to remind me that. there's a more efficient way to do it. Cause I'm still new at this.
Encourage you to go back and look at past conversations.
Sure.
So we have a comment from somebody online. I think Donna Lieben.
Yes.
Still there?
I am here.
Is your camera on?
I'd have no idea. This is a brand-new iPad.
We don't see you yet, but we don't have to.
That's okay. As long as you can hear me.
Yes.
That's probably fine. Oh, would like to access the camera. Okay, maybe now. Anyway, doesn't really matter. So I definitely had a few more questions about the lighting on Dorset Street and especially agree with Counselor Fitzgerald's comment that, you know, if you add, if you add lighting to this section of Dorset Street, it's a contrast issue. So everything else where you don't add it is gonna feel darker. Kennedy Drive already doesn't have much lighting, you know, has very limited lighting on it. And it's really close by, so that's gonna feel especially dark if you add a lot of additional sidewalk lighting. I think the idea of adding sidewalk lighting is a very good one, but I'd like to see more information about how it's being added because, I mean, there's a lot of poles there already. And so I would hope that the existing poles are being taken advantage of to add some of the pedestrian lighting to the existing poles because, you know, adding, adding a lot of additional poles and not coordinating with the poles that are there already is gonna not look very, it's gonna look a little, I don't know, waste, maybe a little wasteful to not utilize some of the existing poles. The other thing is focusing and, you know, Tom mentioned that the standard for the lighting on Dorset Street is minimum standard. I wanna make sure that everybody understands that IESNA RP twenty, it's not a minimum standard. That is the standard. They do not recommend going above that mostly because it becomes light pollution. You know, so it's good to stay close. However, the sidewalks do not have a lot of lighting on them, and a lot of the reason for that is the trees. You know, the trees, sometimes the canopy of the tree really prevents a lot of light from hitting the sidewalk. So I wondered if the designers had done a thorough job in looking at where, you know, where these new poles are and how the trees were gonna affect lighting that's up at twenty-two feet, which is, it's great from a distribution standpoint, but if they didn't actually come out and look at the trees, you might end up finding out that you're not getting as much light as you expected without having to, you know, cut into the trees quite a bit. So I, you know, I would definitely be happy to take a look at, you know, not, you know, no charge or anything to look at those plans a little bit more. Focus the lighting on the crosswalks more so in places where there's real pedestrian paths because otherwise, you are gonna get complaints after it's done that the rest of Dorset Street needs more lighting, Kennedy Drive needs more lighting, everything else needs more lighting. Because, yeah, people want more, but, you know, the minimums are based on this is adequate. But in addition to that, you do need to focus on the crosswalks and really add more lighting around the crosswalks and in those vicinity's. So I think that maybe, you know, you might be able to pare that back a little bit. That's, that's kind of, that's my comment.
Great. Thank you, Donna. Anything else? Now your camera's on.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just decided to come on.
I guess I just had to press one more button.
Yeah. Great.
Still learning.
Actually, Susan, since that was raised, how would you respond to that question? You have parents who have kids coming from Dorset, the O'Brien Farm, construction. You have kids coming down from Vermont Memorial and stuff. Is, cause you talked about the one-mile radius. So I guess the decision is, why this particular section of the one-mile radius is to stand out as particularly problematic as to stand out? I mean, we do have some key crosswalks, and I'm so glad that on the Kennedy Street and the crosswalks in the school zone. I mean, it's really great. I've seen people reluctantly slow down, but you can see more and more cars slowing down, so I think it's taking effect.
Are you talking about the lighting?
Yeah.
Question? It's a good question. I think... Yeah, it's a good question. I think that there are kids that are using, you know, Dorset Street right now, maybe more so than the surrounding areas at this point in time. So I don't have a good answer. I mean, I think that as things get more lit up, it's probably true that people that are living a little further away are gonna also want more lighting to come in. You know, they wanna be able to walk and bike to school. So it's a fair question.
So there is some note in the, with Hoyle Tanner, the engineer provided about the impact that trees are having and how they can reduce kind of the light that's coming down. So that's discussed to some extent in the study that they provided us. And I'll just also note, lights at crosswalks are in no matter what. That's not part of the sixteen additional, anything at a crosswalk or intersection, those lights are in. And the last thing I'll note, my initial reaction was the same is that we could use those additional poles out there, maybe hang a light off the backside of them, and that would improve lighting. It was quickly shown to me by the consultant how that wasn't gonna work and result in a lot of light spilling out of the city right of way, just by nature where the existing poles are located. So I was disappointed when they explained that to me, which is how we sort of came to this other solution that is before you now. But certainly, all the information's available. I can share it again as needed or folks are interested.
I guess I would also say that Dorset Street is more of an urban street. You have a lot of destinations that are further to the north. So I would assume you do have just more pedestrian and cyclist traffic, even between Market Street and other destinations in that area down to the school.
Is there any plan to do any pruning of the trees at all?
So we had the arborist go out and take a look at doing tree prunings. And then some of the taller trees, I think, on the school side especially, but also, I guess, on the other side, when you get further north of the old city hall, now the school admin building. So we did have the arborist take a look at that. I think he did some limited pruning in that area already.
He did?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
And I know, we didn't mention it, but our arborist has retired after twenty-seven-plus years, a service to the city. So we'll be advertising for a new arborist soon, but it was Craig, the best in his retirement. Thought I'd slide that in.
I guess one last thing. I think it's important to be aware that as we continue this work into next year, we're gonna have a list of issues emerging from each of the schools, and there will probably be priority projects at each one of them that they would really like to see given attention to. So I would just say to keep that in mind as well. At Chamberlain, as you know, thirty issues were identified. We're clearly not saying that all of them need to be addressed immediately, and we've talked about the need for that process to get those projects folded into the city's regular planning process and whatever prioritization process that is. But again, these two just seem to be so significant that they were worthwhile for the task force to encourage support for this year.
Great. Well, I appreciate the presentation and the requests, and we'll be having discussion about it.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So we're gonna move on to item... Even though you were told to share, stop sharing. So moving into item eight, which is receive the annual Woduski Valley Park District presentation with Nick Warner, Executive Director. Still sharing.
So you're not gonna be able to share until she stops sharing. Do you mind if I just kick you out?
It's nothing personal. Bless you. We're calling in for reinforcements. Nice Broncos shirt. That's an alternative.
Oh, there you go.
Is your microphone on? Bright green? There we go. There we go. Thanks. All right. Got our tech together. Thank you for having us here tonight. I haven't been in this particular room before, in this beautiful building. Several of you up there are very familiar with us, others have not, not so much. So I'm gonna do a brief summary of who we are. I know you've got a lot on your agenda and that we're working a little late here, so I'll be swift. We are a Woduski Valley Park District, is a hybrid municipal regional corporation and 501(c)(3) nonprofits, been existence since nineteen seventy-two. And we are entirely focused on the acquisition, protection, and management of conservation properties. And you can actually move through this pretty quickly. I'm not gonna talk over each slide because it gives you sort of a generalized picture. We currently have eighteen properties under management, a little under eighteen hundred acres totally. And as you see from the data, quite a few acres of wetlands and flood plain. You can imagine how that's changed our approach to management over the last couple of years for the flooding. It's been, had a huge impact. You can keep going right through.
How much of that is in South Burlington?
I'll get to that slide. It's about a hundred and eleven acres. We have several parks. You can't see this map very well, but it's just, it shows how many groups are engaged in conservation in the Lower Woduski. And it's just a reflection of how we work in a business with a lot of entities, including City of South Burlington and our municipal partners, of which you are one of eight on acquiring and conserving properties, and we do that in many different ways. Go ahead, keep going right through, Jesse. We do quite a bit with environmental education, although in recent years, we've acted more of a host and a partner. We've got a preschool that leases from us, and we work directly with the universities and local schools on a variety of programs. Go ahead, keep going. We are, we leverage quite a bit of volunteer time and outside resources and donated labor and donated materials. And we are very active, proactive in bringing outside resources into the organization. Go ahead, keep going. Just amazing spots to visit. You may have been to our parks and not even realized you were there. We've had that, people tell us that quite a bit. But although we do have a lot of natural assets, the evaluation that we do when we acquire property is pretty broad and talks about ecological health, but also our ability to manage its impacts on the tax base and the residents and so forth. Go ahead, keep going. Just going back to how we operate, we have a small staff of three year-round. We have between three and five people that we bring on during the summer, usually a couple or three people that we bring on in the summer. So we're very reliant and very proactive with working with outside groups and outside funding sources to get our work done. It's really a major part of our model. We've also diversified our income, and that's been a big goal of ours over the last decade. What's been very successful for us in the last few years is we're acting as a fiscal agent in working with our fellow nonprofits, and we charge an administrative fee. We also have a number of buildings that we rent out and we get, we rent out for events, but we also have two caretaker residences and other opportunities. And we also do fee-for-service contracting for our member towns. We haven't done as much with South Burlington that we have recently, but in recent years, we've done quite a bit. This is just a sampling of the partners and tenants we work with. Alnabaiwi is a confederation of the four recognized Abnaki tribes. They rent from us, actually, their office is right next to mine, and they have an Abnaki village at the Ethan Allen Homestead. The museum is there interpreting Ethan Allen's last home. Burlington Forest Preschool that I mentioned before, the Janet Mon family room. Go ahead, keep going right through this. Burlington Wildways, which is a very interesting, comprehensive effort in Burlington to get people outdoors and onto the trails and to do a better job interpreting and signing things. Quite a bit of interaction with community gardens. And the New Farms for New Americans have a large plot at our facility as well. And can't see this very well, but this is a list of our parks in the acreage that we've assembled over time. Keep going. We're gonna go through the specific parks, and we'll just go through this really quickly because I just wanna give you a sampling. We have a slide for each park.
So for the council, I did forward you this presentation from Nick, so it's in your inbox too if you would like to go back.
The vast majority of the parks are actively used. There are a couple of parcels where we intentionally manage for very limited access, but that's the exception to the rule. We tend to try to encourage people to get into our parks, and a lot of our work is maintaining and building trail systems. Coming up on the South Burlington Parks, is what you guys wanna... Okay, there's Muddy Brook Park. The Wetland Reserve. Woduski Gorge, one of my favorites. And there's an undeveloped parcel called Valley Ridge, which actually skirts over into Burlington as well. And it's behind that new housing development off of Grove Street. This, I'd stay on this just for a second. We're working on a new park in Williston. Right now, it's called the Jacob Parcel for the like of any other creative thinking around the name so far. But it is a parcel that was donated to the town. We're currently working with Global Foundries, that's local, that's located... We're currently working with Global Foundries, that's local, that's located right across the river. And they are looking to donate us a parking lot in a right-of-way so we can have a decent access into the park. So we're very excited about this project. It's taken us the last four or five years to put it together. But we're pretty confident that this, this year, that's going to turn into our nineteenth property. Go ahead. And that's the last slide, I told you to go through it quickly. I think that you will probably have questions about how our budget works. For those who have not worked with us before, we try to do an annual math problem. We work, we work through our budget. The trustees, we debate and come up with a budget. We try to keep it as tight as possible. And we try to keep the town's donations to that budget each year, or allocations, donation's the wrong word, as, as limited as possible. And we use a, what is a relatively progressive formula that uses the, the population in the grand list, the equalized grand list of each town to try to allocate out how much money each town is going to contribute. So that's, if you look at this document that actually Larry has in the scene right now, this shows the last few years and how that formula has impacted each member town. Because I go to, I do this, I do the rounds each year and each town wants to know what the other town is paying. So now you know, and you know how it's, how it's put together. It's, it's our best attempt to try to take, try to build equity into each year's allocation process. So that was a very quick version of my presentation because I know you're behind on your, your agenda, but I'd love to field any questions or concerns.
So let's just say that South Burlington had a very small, you know, share, you know, a few acres, say, in the Valley Park District. That wouldn't be reflected in computing our fair share?
No. And you know, that was, that's an interesting point. If you're talking about taking acreage and integrating it into the annual calculation. The problem with that is it doesn't reflect the community's ability to pay. It doesn't reflect the fact that it's a shared system. And it also skews towards Colchester because they have eleven hundred of our eighteen hundred acres. The amount of acreage in those parks did not necessarily reflect the amount of work it takes to manage them.
So that's going to be my final question. Can you maybe just hum a few bars of the services that were rendered with respect to our acres? You know, repairing, restoration, invasives removal, like?
Yes.
What, yeah, what did?
All of that. That's a great point. For instance, Muddy Brook Wetland Reserve, we've done several really good rounds of invasive removals and strategic plannings along the shoreline there of Muddy Brook. And at Wunuski Gorge, there's a lot of maintenance, a lot of trash pickup, a lot of, you know, some graffiti removal. You know, it's more of an active urban type environment. And the other muddy, Muddy Brook requires less maintenance. It's just a short trail along, along the shoreline, but you know, we do regular maintenance down there. But there's quite a bit of invasive work and there's quite a bit of trail work. We've been challenged certainly with the flooding. And we've been able to get, you know, a few grants and some assistance on, on that. And the weather, the changes in the weather patterns has been very challenging with all the blowdowns and eroding shorelines and so forth. So we're encountering all those issues and we're, we're choosing to lean into it. We think that we've evolved from an organization that is really focused around saving scenic vistas and equality of life. And we've evolved into a group that has an important role around water quality and flood mitigation. So we, we lean into that and we're, the staff is getting trained on, in, in water quality. We've gotten a couple of capacity grants to help build our, our work in that area. And we, at least I feel, I think the board does too, although we don't have a specific policy around it, is that down the line, we're going to be seeing more and more work around wetlands and flood plain and having a more role, a bigger role with that.
Can I just note that the funding formula that Nick outlined is baked into your three point three percent budget already? So this is not a new request, it is already in there.
Yes.
But Nick and Larry like to come every year and, and share information about the organization.
I may appreciate what you do and
Sure.
Larry, thanks to see you, you really pop up everywhere. We should have like a little gap where we'll see Larry last.
He's my boss in East Burlington too.
But, you know, thank you very much for what you do. And, but I have a question, it's interesting because you know, in your presentation, you were talking about the emphasis you put on volunteerism.
Yes.
There's a certain uncertainty in there, I would assume, every year? Or do you have enough certainty? Because then I was a little surprised when you said, and now we're taking on project nineteen. And I was thinking, you know, if you're, so depending on volunteerism, you have a very lean budget. I would think every year you're sort of scrambling, do we have enough people to do to maintain what we had? I'm just curious, for me, it's an interesting model of operation.
We've been actually struck at the consistency, consistency with which we've been having people show up for us. But you're right, it is a struggle. And I wish our park superintendent, Tim Larned, was here because he is an absolute master at leveraging people and equipment and but we, it it's, it's a piece of what we do, but the, you know, most of the skilled work is done by our crew. So we're not depending on, you know, mostly operating chainsaws, the repairing of structures. You know, major work is still being done by our crew. Most of the volunteer stuff is around, you know, major plannings, things that, you know, where it's real advantageous to have a lot of bodies. But we have groups that return every year. It's, it's stunning, it's reassuring, but we don't, we depend on them, but we don't, you know, we do have enough of a staff that we can maintain the system. But it's, it's a constant, you, you mentioned invasives, you mentioned eroding shorelines. Those are two areas in which getting a lot of people out there to do the work is really helpful. I would also mention the conservation partnership that's been going on between several towns has been hugely beneficial. South Burlington has taken a lead on that, they're working with Heinsburg and St. George and other towns around leveraging each other's people and, and resources to get things done. So there's a lot of cross coordination between organizations.
Good question, is there still conversation going around, going on around the possible engagement of you folks with the Great Swamp area in South Burlington?
Yes, although I haven't had conversations for a while on that.
Okay.
But we're, you know, we're, we try to be helpful, you know, just as an example, in Essex, there's a, a piece of land that could be a pretty favorable put-in for a canoe. But we have not, we're not making any commitments to the town, but we've applied for some feasibility money through V H C B and we're working with them technically supporting what they're doing. And then the decision of who owns and how it operates is secondary to figuring out what is the feasibility of this site. So there are times when we jump in, we use our expertise or we lend our expertise to a situation.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, the Wunuski is a really vital river in the state among the others, right? And that represents like a large part of, part of our watershed, right? And our watershed is so important. But then it encompasses this whole kind of like park shed as well, right? Because people have access to it, they can enjoy it, they can view it. And it also, I think, keeps it in mind for when that watershed doesn't behave as it normally does. Like it has said three times now in the last two years, right? So that, I think that, that crystallizes in people's mind that, you know, it behaves how it wants to. And so we probably need to make some changes in our, in like where we live because it's going to happen where we're free with facility and stuff like that. So, so anyway, so I appreciate this work and I, and I really, the resources are just, they're vital.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience or from anybody online, any comments?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks Larry.
And now we're going to move on to item nine, which is continue the city council's discussion of the proposed FY twenty-six budget and provide direction to staff. Will this be quick? Does somebody want to like rehash the whole FY twenty-six budget and take it all apart? And look at the pieces and then put it back together?
Yes, please.
I want a different percentage.
As long as you're going up, I'm fine with that.
Oh, come on.
So what's before you is a quick two-page memo that we put together following the budget presentation in early December, your retreat and your discussion on the sixteenth. This, no specific action is needed tonight, but next Monday night is your public hearing in advance of warning. Next Monday night, the budget you will send to the voters on town meeting day. So what we've tried to capture, tried to capture in a digestible way is what gets you down to where you currently are, which is at a three point three, three percent tax rate increase. The things you have added into staff's recommended budget and the use of two hundred and forty-four thousand of ARPA-inspired fund balance to pay for the climate-related projects of the FY twenty-six C I P. The direction we need from you tonight is have we captured what you recommended at your last meeting? And do you have concern about using the ARPA-inspired fund balance? And while you don't need to vote specifically on that tonight, if you want to change that, we will need to bring you back a different budget for the public hearing next Monday night, including potentially a different C I P. So that's really the one area we need guidance from you on. Otherwise, if we've captured it, no action is needed and I'm happy to screen share the memo if that would be useful.
I think you did a great job.
I'm, I'm comfortable. Everybody else?
Likewise. You guys, you guys knocked it this year.
Not only have you knocked it out this year, I think it also, at least for me, woke up mine on how to get this down to the number that is, is a good number, we're primarily one-off savings. And it just reinforces how going forward this year, talking, what Laurie said at the beginning, how much thoughtful discussion we're going to have to have because we'll be confronting this challenge every year round. So, but thank you again for an amazing job for finding these savings and, and bringing some fees up to sort of current standards.
And I just want to point out that, you know, we'll vote on this at the next meeting. But for, for all voters who are watching or are here tonight to understand that this is a very, I think it's a, it's a lean but productive budget. So when you go to the voting booth on March fifth, right? Please pay attention to this, to the municipal budget for what it is and for how much work has been put into it and for what it produces for the city and for our long-term plans and our city plan. So just keep that in mind, please. If that's it, do you have your, your direction now? Okay. Oh, come on up.
Bob Britt, three Adams Court. These are on, on the, on the fly comments about what we just heard from Safe Roots to School. And I, I wholeheartedly support their request for the lighting and the Richard Terrence sidewalk gap. This lighting is at school with student drivers coming in and out and it's dark all winter long. And we've got a driveway, a excess parking lot beyond the middle school, north of the middle school, where kids come flying out. I've almost been hit going through that sidewalk with no lighting. So I, I just, we have this opportunity for FY twenty-five money to put in this lighting. And I know that we haven't gotten there. We've been working for this, the Bike and Ped Committee has been working to get the lighting in on Kennedy. And, but where else could it be more important than at, at the school? And we have an opportunity to fund it without incremental budget impact for FY twenty-five. And then I don't know how much of this, and it, and it goes against me getting, me asking, or asking for more projects for Penny for Path. But it, it seems to me that consideration should be given for this Richard Terrace sidewalk because you're going to be waiting until twenty-seven before you get this. And, and we have this ARPA-inspired funding that could be used to give this new concept of Safe Roots to School a kickstart. This concept has been wholly, uh, wholeheartedly you, or accepted by the community. And I think to wait two years to kickstart that would be, yeah, a terrible thing. So I think consideration should be given to that. And I do not believe that that would impact your three point three, three, whatever it is, budget. So for what that's worth, we'll see you later in the meeting.
Thank you, Bob. Alright, so is this where we want to move down? So we're going to jump down to item twelve, if you don't mind right now. And, and bump ten and eleven to afterwards. So we're going to go right to item twelve, which is receive an update from the Northeast Agricultural Trust and the South Burlington Land Trust on a joint project at seventeen twenty and seventeen thirty Spear Street, currently called the Longview Project. This follows the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board's approval of funding and an associated resolution. And we're supposed to provide direction to staff. So do we want to get an update first? What did you?
Tim, can I, can I jump in for a second?
Sure, please Andrew, go ahead.
Yeah. So as we are all about to learn, when we get to what was item eleven, the, affected the beginning of this year, really just a few days ago, the city was mandated by the state to adopt a revised kind of statewide conflict of interest policy that replaces the city's own longstanding policy. Under the city's prior policy, if a councillor believed that he or she could act fairly objectively and in the public interest in respect of a matter, there was no need to recuse on account of any potential conflict of interest. In good conscience, I believed and continued to believe that I can act fairly objectively and in the public interest in respect of the long view matter. And that under the prior policy, I didn't have any conflict that required a recusal. However, under this new state mandated policy, a councillor's belief is no longer relevant. A mere interest that is potentially greater than that of other individuals generally affected by the outcome of a matter requires recusal under the newly effective policy. As such, because I do own land that abuts the Longview parcel and therefore may be perceived as having an interest potentially greater than that of other individuals generally affected by the outcome of the matter, I am recusing myself for participating and or acting in respect of the long view matter. And I want to thank our city attorney, Colin McNeil, and helped me parse this new policy on a very expedited basis. So I'm going to recuse myself from this.
So that means you will not participate in discussion and, and nor will you participate in any votes on this project? Okay, just wanted to make.
Yep.
Sure.
So if it's okay with the council, I'll give a general overview of where we are. And then I think it would be in the interest of council to hear from others. So as I shared at the last council meeting, the Longview project was heard by the V H C B board on December thirteenth. Tonight we have with us Gus Sealy, the executive director of V H C B, as well as Trey Martin, the director of conservation, Jenny Highsleth, the director of housing, and Elizabeth Egan, I believe is, how you pronounce her last name, their general counsel. So in your packet tonight is the proposed grant agreement for that award with the revised resolution that you have previously seen the initial resolution for. This resolution includes the conservation of thirty-six point four acres of this parcel with a six-acre transition zone that would allow for community uses and potentially affordable housing in the future if approved by affordable housing in the future if approved by V H C B. It also requires the minimum of sixteen affordable housing units as outlined by the, by Habitat for Humanity. I'm hopeful that there's a clear path forward within this resolution that aligns to your September ninth letter of support. And I'd say to hear from the property owner about their plans, given this board action. This is a very unusual development process. I've, I've been doing this for a while in Vermont now, and this is, this is a new one for me. And I just want to remind all parties that there are many, many steps that follow this board action by V H C B. And I encourage us all to think about trusting that, that development process. So, you know, coming to agreement about a path forward now, thinking about future surveys and appraisals and subdivisions and permitting, there's a lot left to be defined through this development process. And I think there's real potential for us all to stick together as partners to move that forward. I think we have a lot of experts working on this process as well, including obviously the property owner and developer, Habitat, V H C B, our permitting staff, and other interested community members. I also want to remind the council that V H C B has been a critical partner with the city of South Burlington in achieving a lot of our shared goals for decades. Recently, that's included the homes at Summit, at O'Brien Hillside, Garden Street, the Auclair property, and Dorset, and the purchase of Dorset Commons by C H T. And we hope to continue that partnership long into the future, regardless of the outcome of this particular project. So with that, I think we wanted to hear directly from V H C B and then hear anything the property owner would like to share.
And we do have the, and Jenna, I didn't hear that if we need to, we'll go into executive session on this, this subject. So if, oh, is Jenny going to present for us?
I believe Gus Seelig is going to present.
And just to make sure that the light is bright green on the pedestal for the microphone and pull it close to you. Try, hit it again. Hit it again.
It's a brighter green. Okay. There we go. Thank you for having me. I'm Gus Seelig. I'm the executive director of the Housing and Conservation Board. Just briefly, and to the manager's comments, we are a public, quasi-public entity. Our job is to get tax dollars back to communities to do good things that are important to you as the representatives of communities. We have a long relationship with South Burlington that I think goes back at least to nineteen-ninety-nine when we were involved in both Wyman Kiln Apartments and a transfer of Simuan to the Winuski Valley Park District. I think our largest investment was the development of the Odell neighborhood, where we've invested in probably two-hundred-and-fifty apartments and condominiums. I think across eighteen housing projects, we've probably provided eight, five-hundred rental apartments, and I think sixty-seven shared equity homeowners are in South Burlington. So it's been a rich relationship on the housing side. There have been five concert, five prior conservation projects, the largest being several transactions with a bread-and-butter farm over recent years. So that's the work that we've been doing with you historically. When we first, and I just want to say, there's been few issues. Usually when we show up, communities are glad to see us because we're bringing resources to do things you want to do. This project's been a little different. We had more public comment on this project at our board meeting than we have had in the thirty-five years I've been doing this work by a factor of five at least. So we must have had ten people comment. Half of us asking to do one thing, half of us, half of the citizens asking us to a different, to do something different. The resolution that our board passed really has a couple of goals. One is to enhance the support for the wetlands area that already has some level of protection to it, both based on state rules and your zoning. Second, to conserve additional land. And third, to provide a place for Habitat to develop. The additional six-point-two acres has probably been the issue that's been most contentious for people, as I'm sure you're well aware. Our staff's visited it several times. I don't think it's all developable, but some of it I'm sure is. We've been there when it's been dry. We've been there when it's been very wet. Some of it is marked by Vermont Conservation Design. That's not dispositive of its conservation value. But our concern in drafting the resolution was to make sure, because there really isn't a site plan for the Habitat lot, was first to make sure that if we needed a little bit more land in order to accommodate sixteen apart, sixteen homes, that that could be done. I talked with the landowner last Friday, and he assured me that whether there or on another adjoining parcel that is separate from this deal, that it was his intention to make sure Habitat, he could deliver sixteen permitted lots. So that, I think, is good news. Our goal here was simply to, for you as representatives of the city, to determine how much the future uses would be recreation and of what sort, or community gardens, or trails, or whatever, or just let things grow as they will, that we weren't going to be the determiners of that. But if you did want to do more development, you'd have to come back to us, and we would look at the primag soils, the proximity to the wetlands, whether it was wet or not, and work with you on that. So that's the resolution that our board passed. And I'm happy to try to answer questions, if I can, about your consideration. I think, as the manager stated, and we've had a working relationship with Jessie, I think going back to her time in Montpelier and through Winuski, and you are so lucky to have such a talented manager. There will be a process that you will go through and that we will work with you on to get to whatever your final disposition of all this land is and a site plan for Habitat, which they really need to develop in conjunction with the landowner, that will accommodate sixteen homes in a nice way. The benefits to Habitat, as some of you know, and this week with the passing of Jimmy Carter, who was so dedicated, is that they bring tons of volunteers to help people build their homes. And that makes it the most affordable homeownership option that we provide anybody. So I think the last several houses we've done with Habitat, Elizabeth, please correct me, have probably, the net cost to the homeowner, homeowner after our subsidy and the volunteer labor has been under two-hundred thousand dollars, which in this market is something of a miracle and really of high value, and I think better than the prior proposal that the city did reject that would have provided five permanently affordable homes, I think, on the lot. So we see the Habitat project as a big net gain for affordable housing and for the community. And with that, I'm going to stop talking. Trey, or Elizabeth, if I missed anything, do you want to add something?
I think only if people have questions, we'd be happy to.
Make sure that green light is on. And identify yourself too, please.
I'm Trey Martin. I'm the director of conservation and rural community development at V H C B. I'm colorblind, but I think it's working, so. Yeah, I was going to say, I, I think Gus hit most of the high points. We are here tonight to hear your questions, to react in real time, to hear, hear your dialogue with the landowner, and I, I hope to find some resolution tonight. I think the, one of the most important things that Gus said tonight is that the, these six acres that are in contention here are, there's, there, there are a lot of potential uses there. There, there could be development for community use. It could, you could have tennis courts, you could have gazebos, you could have trails, you could have gardens. Portions of them also are mapped as wetland in those six acres and couldn't be developed, we don't think, at least without a delineation by a wetlands expert. And so when Jessie said we need to really trust the process and go forward, that's very much what we believe needs to happen next, is to, to move forward with the city in the driver's seat. This, the, the resolution that staff drafted was, as Gus said, fundamentally about giving you the flexibility to think over time, what is the highest and best use of this, this property? If that means more, if that generation from now was to be more development, maybe that would be it. If it was never to be developed again, that would be the city's determination. What we'd like to do is be, be able to be reactive to the city's evolving needs and desires for the property over time. And so, you know, we could be here tonight in a posture of trying to, you know, think through some sort of compromise. We could be here tonight to just let you ask questions and, and ask questions of, of Mr. Belavance, and we could continue to come and visit with you until we get this right. But this is a fantastic dual-goal project that, that staff are really excited about. And, and I want to say that V H C B staff are most excited when we bring our values together in a project like this, where we see a fabulous result like Habitat for Humanity Houses alongside conservation of a community resource like the Great Swamp. So we don't want this, we don't want to let this go. And that's why we put so much effort into this, despite the fact that it has been hard for the community to, to come together.
So you're confident that a conservation easement can be ordered such that, that six-point-two acres has this so-called transition zone that could have some development in it, but with no timeline constraint? Or would it have a timeline constraint for possible development?
I think, I think we're trying to leave that up to you, and you might determine there's no reason for there to be any further development for the next decade or more, just as a starting point. You could want to plan for picnic tables and a gazebo or community gardens and, then, and, you know, revisit it after the first sixteen homes are built. We're not trying to determine, on your behalf, what the planning process should be. We just saw those six, six acres as a little bit different than the thirty acres, which are not, from our perspective, should not be developed at all.
Questions from the council?
Yeah, I, I'm thrilled to hear your commitment to the project. And to me, this is one of the most exciting projects I've seen in South Burlington in a very long time. And I've heard talk in the past about environmental justice and too much money going to the southeast quadrant of the city, et cetera, et cetera. This is a project that is going to bring sixteen permanently affordable ownership homes to this segment of our town, which quote is the high-rent district. And I don't know any other project that could possibly come forward and bring that kind of affordability to the southeast quadrant. So I very much want to see this project move forward. I respect that this property is owned by a private owner and that they're really in the driver's seat. This is their land. They want to do something with it. They have a vision. And somehow, we need to be able to work, work with that and respect it and find a solution that they're going to be happy with. Otherwise, this project doesn't go forward. So it's great to talk about what we as a city would like to see. We don't own the land currently, and we can't buy the land unless the city agrees to sell, I mean, unless the landowner agrees to sell it to us. So I really need to hear from the Belavances about what in this agreement now is acceptable and not acceptable, how we work around that. For me, saying that the six acres or the six-point-two acres can be reserved so that if sixteen units don't fit on the appointed land right now, some of that land can be used for that. I have no problem with that. But I know that Tom and Janet have also talked about the other parcel possibly being able to expand. So I want us all to come together to an agreement, and I'd love to hear where the Belavances are in relationship to what is now in front of us.
So your special condition one C, right, is, is the sticking point for the six-point-two acres where you would like to have the possibility for future development on, on that part of the property that's developable, right? And, and part of our letter of support, I think, stated that we would be using open space funds, definitely for the sixty acres, thirty acres that are in the Great Swamp area that are in our P U today. And then also for this other six acres, the way the original, you know, plan was. The problem is, is we're not sure if the open space funds could be used to purchase and still fulfill that possible development on that property. So Colin McNeil is our-
Colin. Heads up.
Is our city attorney, and we were hoping he could come, if he can give us some sort of an opinion, or just tell us what the progress is of trying to get that opinion.
Colin, the question is, can we use open space funds to purchase the six acres if there's a potential future housing development? And Elizabeth Egan is their general counsel as well?
Oh, sure. Would you like to speak after Colin or before? Okay. And sir, make sure the green light's on. And identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In, in looking into this, I think we have looked at, you know, gone back and looked at the ballot initiatives and what was approved by the voters. And the voter, the, I think specifically, the language is that it's for the purchase of lands that will be reserved for open space and conservation. I don't think it says conservation, but reserve for open space purposes. So I think there is, would be a challenge if you're going to be using open space funds or conservation funds to purchase lands that are not going to be conserved or going to be developed. You can also use them for recreation and recreation purposes. That has also been approved by the voters. But to use them from, something for other than preserving open space or recreation, I think would be outside the authority that was given to you by the voters.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Egan, general counsel of V H C B. And my question would be to your counsel in terms of if all thirty-six acre-
If all thirty-six acres is conserved, but the possibility for a portion of that conserved acreage is left flexible for the city to decide how it's to be used, does that allow the open space funds?
That's a good question.
And I- We, we can, Colin McNeil, city attorney. I think we can, I think what we had was a conversation in previous meetings about the utilization of, of the open space funds to ensure that they are used for the purchase of, of open space. That doesn't mean that that has to be permanent, that you could always potentially reimburse the fund, or somehow figure out a way to, if you're going to change the use, to reimburse the, the open space fund for the monies that were spent. So I don't think it technically means that, that money has to be perpetually used for, those lands have to perpetually be used for open space fund, open spaces. However, I think that if you are purchasing them with the idea that you're keeping your options open, that, that does make it a little tricky. We can have further, I can certainly have further conversations with the, with the general counsel. But that's what I'm thinking right now.
If I can jump in, I think this is one of the things in trusting the process. You know, I think that the, the goal here is to ensure that we have the sixteen homes. That was, what was in your letter of support? That's what Habitat says they need. That's what I think excites V H C B. It's what the property owner is willing to do. I think that the challenge is, we don't, we haven't surveyed the land. We haven't gone through the permitting process. We don't know where those lines are going to ebb and flow. So at this point in the process, I think there's a path forward with open space funds, which may require in the future, if a half acre is needed, if an acre is needed, some different calculation to be done. But we don't have enough information right now, very early in this very unusual development process, to rule out any of these options.
And Trey Martin, again, from Housing and Conservation Board, conservation director. And I want to underscore that the purpose of one C was to, to allow future discussion. It doesn't require development. It doesn't prescribe development. It doesn't set a goal specifically for, for development. It simply says that the city would have to come back to V H C B and seek approval before development happened. So the way that the full set of resolutions work together is to ensure that there would be sixteen Habitat units. sixteen habitat units, that there would be at least thirty acres of the Great Swamp protected and probably a, a significant portion of, of the six acres, but not to tie the city's hands ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road of conditions and, and needs change. Um, we believe that, that what our board has approved, um, does give you that flexibility and, and that you could, you could set your own restrictions or set your, you know, as a council in, you're making that even larger award than we are potentially here. And that can come with your own conditions, including that it not be developed, you know, through some period of moratorium or unless something changed in the future, unless there was a repayment of the open space fund, if that should happen. These are the kinds of things that we were trying to think down the road to do. What we were very specifically not trying to do was to force anybody's hand or to force the community to make decisions now when, when we haven't even begun to look at the feasibility of putting sixteen acres. I'm sorry, sixteen houses on a two and a half acre parcel that has, you know, a potentially historic, uh, you know, building on it that might, you know, change the way that that, that parcel could be developed. It has potentially a, a class three wetland that comes down into the back of the parcel that might circumscribe development there. And there may be others sort of site planning constraints. And so everybody, you know, that, that sixteen units is what Habitat has said is necessary for them to be able to move forward. So that's, that has been a, a primary concern for us. What is not a concern again is to, to force you to do anything beyond that, but to rather give you that long-term flexibility.
Thank you. That's important to know.
Perhaps I'll make some comments as the person voted no against the project, just to be sure you understand the perspective I was sharing. And hopefully for me, the six C as defined and hopefully the lawyers can find a way to make it work is something I would, as I said at the time, would have changed my mind. Uh, I, I believe that, you know, I, I, I read, uh, one of your correspondence in which you said class two nature of the wetland complex in South Burlington's own zoning already provides a great deal of protection. So without affordable housing appropriately located, this would not be a high priority for our funding. And that was basically my view. We are putting in a large chunk of money to this project. And we, I thought it was only incumbent upon us to maximize, uh, the, the affordable housing aspects of it. Uh, to make this for the city a, a win-win, uh, given the different needs of the community, those who have the benefit of, of enjoying open space because they have housing and those who wish to have housing and cannot enjoy it. And, and so for me at the time, I had, uh, urged that we include language that said, we will strive to go beyond sixteen. And I happily interpreted your one C as a potential opening in the future at some point that is dictated and seen as way forward. And at the time that would have, uh, as I said, swayed me, but it was not included. Uh, the second reason for voting no was, uh, as was mentioned here and was as mentioned before, we sort of deviated from our standard procedures in purchasing land. And I think that has created a, a lot of consternation, especially because this was done against the backdrop uh, of the open funds having so far exclusively been used only to purchase land in the southeast quadrant. And has land and has never been used to allocate to purchase land for active recreation, something that was included as a, an option. And so given that backdrop, I thought it was, had been, been more productive and less, create less consternation or concerned or, or sort of, uh, you know, um, questions about this had we gone through the whole procedure. And I'm glad that we've taken this additional time and we're going through the procedure because I think that will lead us hopefully to a good place. But I also keep in mind that at the end of this year, we will be getting recommendations, uh, from the city's a group that is working on a master plan for open spaces and active recreation throughout the city to, to bring equity, to create the greatest opportunity for the max, for the maximum people to have access. And, uh, uh, in pursuing the long project, you know, we will be basically using the funds available in that fund and it'll take a little over two years to, to recoup those funds. And therefore it is, it is one of our sources to act on these recommendations. It's not the only source, but clearly one of the key sources. Also, one thing that we've talked about in the city is, uh, the importance of having, uh, a green, city green. And, and obviously we're going to have to go to a bond level, but again, if we had funds and open source funds, that would help sort of mitigate the level of bond that we'd have to take. And I think both of those components, master plan and the city green are also by the equity access for all, all of our, our, all of our people. Um, so, but I, 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 I welcome that you said that you've come here with a goal of trying to find a way forward. Uh, again, with the proviso that I laid out at the first, which, uh, was, you know, are we really maximizing a true balance of conservation and affordable housing? I would like to think that we could keep the one C. I would like to think that our lawyers, uh, as, at least in the movies, are always able to find a solution to everything. And so I'll, I'll use that as my guide. Uh, I, I hope that we can get to that. And I hope so as to put away perhaps some of the misconceptions that have arisen uh, around this whole process that we basically carry this out, not in executive session, but in open session. So we, when we come to our final state, everyone will feel that uh, they have clear sense of how we got there, what are the benefits? And how in the end, hopefully, uh, there can be enough that everyone can feel that something is gained for them regardless of where they live in the city. So thank you again for your, your flexibility and your desire to come here to work with the private partner, with the city and with the other partners to find a way forward on this.
So Mike, are you saying you support the project now?
If we can have the one C, as I said at the beginning, include an openness for development of more than sixteen. At least we keep that option open. Remember, I put that on the table and three of you voted against that.
Elizabeth, any questions?
No, but I make a quick observation. I had an opportunity to sit in on your board meeting and gosh, you run a great meeting. Um, it was, I know, noticed it was worn for about ten minutes and I had to get off the call at about forty minutes. It would, I appreciate that. There was a lot of public comment. Um, I have also listened to our city manager, um, as a newer counselor to trust the process. And I was very interested to see what your board would go through in deliberations. And I appreciated the fact that, um, originally when, um, this came to us and there was the anticipation of, of presenting to your board meeting in October. Um, I don't think I fully understood the opportunities that there might be to inc- to include flexibility in the, um, proposal. So I appreciated the fact that the experts on your team who represent both conservation and housing uh, deliberated about that and included that opportunity. Um, and, and to me, that is a hallmark of what we need to be looking for in terms of, um, future needs of generations that we, we can't even anticipate right now and live with, um, the intent of the agreement to both conserve and provide permanently affordable housing, but keep some flexibility that allows, uh, you know, a new council and a, a new, you know, housing and conservation board to really understand what the emerging needs are um, and adapt to those. So what, if it's passive recreation, if it's permanent conservation, if it's more active recreation, if it's, if it is additional, um, housing, if that is a requirement. Um, I think keeping some level of flexibility makes this, um, a more robust project. So I appreciated the process he went through and I was, um, glad that I could participate by listening into your board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, Mr. Belavance, did you want to come down and, and address the, uh, the council?
I first would like to thank you for giving us time to meet. This process started twenty-four months ago. And no matter the outcome, I am so grateful that we've gone through this process. Uh, the greatest thing is I've gotten to meet, uh, the city councillors, the city staff. It has been a true blessing. This has started out to be a conservation project. That's what we were looking for. Why I got involved in it is because I have grandchildren who live in this city. I have children who live in this city. And I have the utmost respect that the work of V H C B does. Uh, Gus and I have known each other for many years. I've sit in on one of their committees many, many years ago. I have been on the Vermont Land Trust. I totally believe in conservation. But during this process, we were told to go out and find some partners about the affordable housing. We did that. We went out and we found Habitat for Humanity. We are fully committed to building those sixteen homes. Obviously the appraisal came in on those two point five acres. It was appraised for much higher than what we are selling it to Habitat for. So we're having a bargain sale there. On the conservation land, we are doing a bargain sale for fifty percent of the value. So we talked about who's got the funds in the, in the game. It is the landowner, probably the most funds. So we go through this process. And one of the reasons why you do this money is for the future generations. Okay. And my goal is to build the twenty units of affordable housing. The meetings I've had with Habitat, they seem to be a great organization. I have the utmost respect. I know we can get that done, those twenty homes. But ten years from now, fifteen
I have a question for you. You're talking about twenty homes?
Excuse me, sixteen.
Okay.
Sixteen, sorry about that.
I saw some eyes go up.
Okay. Thank you, Laurie. So that is where we stand today is we are committed to the, uh, the sixteen homes. And we are committed to preserving this open space, all of it, including the six point two acres. With one C, I think we're open to public access, public use, you know, public gardens, but we are not going to, we are not in favor of any additional housing above the sixteen proposed units. Okay, and we have made that choice that this is what we would like to see happen. The city council has to make a choice too, whether they're in or they're out. Do, do we go ahead as the city council and their support need the South Burlington Land Trust and Habitat? Four people have agreed to the principles of our original plan. V H C B has come in at the sort of the last minute and put in this one C. The South Burlington Land Trust put their application in last February to V H C B. It was not until November of this year, nine months later, that we knew that one C was going to be included in that resolution. We did not have time to organize. We could have had many more people speak at this public hearing of V H C B. But we thought the project stood on its own. So I'm ready to say that we are committed to the project. We are committed to the four partners. Uh, but one C will not be part of our project that would allow additional housing.
So just to be clear, there's, there's no type of transitional language that could be put in the easement that you would tolerate that would allow any, uh, uh, any homes built on the six point two?
Correct.
Correct. Is that, that's yours and the land trust's opinion?
I believe that is the land trust's opinion, yes.
Okay, alright. I just want to make sure.
I have a question on that. Um, whether it's land trust opinion or not, isn't really important because you own the land and you're the ultimate decider here, uh, in that regard. But in terms of flexibility with one C, um, I hear that part of the reason for it was if for some reason the two and a half acres and the land on the other parcel that you have didn't create enough space for there to be sixteen units. Um, there would be the possibility that some of the six point two acres could be used to ensure that all sixteen units got built. If that was the extent of the exception of one C, would that be something that you could tolerate and be comfortable with? Or would that go beyond what you're acceptable with?
Sure. I, I would be fine with the sixteen homes being built and we're going to do whatever it takes. Again, my understanding of the letter from the city is no, the contingency of those public funds was a minimum of sixteen homes. I was under the understanding from V H C B that this was a dual project and a minimum would be sixteen homes. So we have, the project does not move forward unless we have sixteen homes built on that, on that long property.
And I also hear you saying that the project does not move forward if there are going to be more than sixteen homes built.
Correct.
Spreading onto the six point two acres.
Correct.
So that's a critical piece as we all try to negotiate this, knowing that there's a hard stop for the home, for, for the landowner. And this is something that you, you're committed to making happen. If we can do it, I might love to have twenty homes built there since you were using that number. Um, which, but, but if that's not an option, sixteen homes are a hell of a lot better than none for me. Um, and the other question I have for you is if there were the potential for one C to be changed so that it talked about moving this project forward to flesh it all out. Um, is there? I'm just wondering if there's room to move forward and still have flexibility on how the, the final language of one, of one C ends once we get through the whole extensive process that we have going forward. Did that make sense, what I said?
It does, Laurie. I would, I would leave that up to the attorneys to draft that. But my underlying thing would be no more than sixteen homes on what we know is a long property. Okay. Over the last couple of years, I've been up there working on the property, meeting a lot of neighbors, and I've told neighbors that this is the goal. And at some point you've got to stand by your principles. You may not be faith, you know, you may not be positive, positively viewed, but you, if you don't stand by your principles, you don't stand by anything. And, um, our principles is the, you know, the sixteen homes, creating a home for those sixteen families, creating public access to the citizens of South Burlington, getting those bikes off from Spear Street and onto a bike path. This has so much for all of us. And one of my other fears today is we, we talk about wetlands being protected under local and, um, state rules. But I tell you with this new administration in Washington, don't take anything for granted. Because what we think is protected today may not be. So any more questions we could raise?
I just want to say that, um, I have a tremendous amount of appreciation and respect for what you have stepped forward and offered to our city. Um, this land could have quote had thirty-four or more repeat houses of what's in the southeast quadrant, put on it potentially with another developer. Um, there have been comments about you trying to get the city to, to buy you out of a bad land deal. Um, it is self-evident that you are doing an act of generosity to our community. And, um, I have deep respect for that. And I truly hope that between V H C B and you folks and us, that we can find a way to honor that and, and get a project forward.
I appreciate those words, Laurie.
So, so another question is, I mean, we, we have a major sticking point here and we, we can't move forward without either having to have an executive session to give feedback to, you know, um, to N E A T and the V H C B and, and the land trust. Do you want to do that now? Or do you have some other idea?
I, I wonder if, I mean, I wonder if we shouldn't, because we had this issue before, if we shouldn't be directing Jesse and staff to um, work with the partners to come back with a proposal that addresses what we've heard here tonight.
I would like to pose a question to V H C B. Um, and I don't know if that needs to happen in executive session or if we can have this conversation in public, but given where the landowners' hard stop is, is there a way that V H C B can remain engaged in this project and honor the landowner's request? Or is that a hard stop for you? Or is that a hard stop for you as well?
You'll have to come up to the microphone.
Um because because. What we deliberate as as the city. We're considering buying. But if there's no sale, there's nothing to buy. So if these.
Well, ke- keep in mind that that the VHCB grant is for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the entire project. So that's the scale. Of it versus what the the Southland was. Thinking of paying, right, and what Habitat was gonna pay, right, and what NEAT was gonna kick in as well is for the total project, so.
But that's an important bridge piece of this.
It it is, it is, but it so just keep that in mind.
Yeah.
I don't think it's the Housing and Conservation Board's. Role to dictate to the city. What you do with land that's gonna come into your possession, if we can make the steal. Move forward, we will be asked by Habitat to put more money into the deal. I do wanna acknowledge um both that. The new information on the appraisal that came in in the last week or so does provide them. With a bargain sale, doesn't reduce the price to them, but it means the price isn't going up and it is a bargain sale to them. And I also just wanna say, Tom and I have, as he said, worked together well for thirty some years. I have already said to you, I think the Habitat houses are really important. They will be far more affordable. Than anything that your inclusionary zoning ordinance would produce if you had a different kind of developer, so I wanna acknowledge that. Um as we looked at it. We said. We looked at, you know, your zoning, we looked at. The land, we came up with the resolution we did. You will be a larger funder in this project. Than we are. If your funding wants to come with more restrictions. I'm happy to talk with my board about whether that becomes a deal stopper. For them, but you're being asked at this moment, though will be asked later. To support the Habitat part of the project. Um financially, to put more money into the conservation part, so if you choose to restrict it more. I'll take that up with my board, but I think when we said you're in the dr-. We want you to be in the driver's seat as a policy matter, it's part of what I suggested. You know, perhaps there'd be no future development for some period of time, like a decade or more. Um and take a look at things down the road. If you want no reopeners, then make that decision and we'll take it back to our board.
Let me go ahead, so then I.
Maybe we're all gonna do the same thing.
I just have a follow up question for council then. Um I hear from VHCB. That if we chose to. In our side of the deal, say we're in for this. But. The only. Use for the six point two acres of land for housing would be if it was required for the sixteen units. In perpetuity. Is that something that we as a council could agree to? In order to have this deal close? And I'm asking. Everybody here.
Well, no, so the first question is, is is can the sixteen be contained on the original proposed area for Habitat, or do we think?
We we don't, we don't know that at this point.
See, we don't even know.
That that goes back, but I think we are all in agreement. I think that if more than two and a half acres is needed.
Okay.
We're gonna get to that.
And I I think that's what Laurie was suggesting is. Does the council want to make a motion saying? We would interpret one C to mean that. Um within the transition zone, the only housing that the city would support would be housing to get up to the sixteen. Units of of Habitat affordable housing. Otherwise, only community uses such as paths, gardens. Uh recreation would be allowed.
And to do that. So that we are in alignment with. The home, the landowner that wants to do this sale and that has put this limit. On it. You know, I might, I might personally wanna do twenty or forty homes on it. But this is. This is. What we're dealing with and. Even if we came up with the money some other way. That's still the limit that we're. That the landowner has put forward. And is that acceptable to this council? That. We do this deal, we get sixteen permanently affordable. Ownership homes in the southeast quadrant. In this location. Plus the conserved land. And that's what we're agreeing to because. That's what the landowner has said. Are the conditions for the project. And we agree to that.
That's why I'm suggesting a motion.
I know. So.
Yeah. Makes sense to me.
I just. Before making the motion, I wanted to see if we sort of had the. The head nods to say, yes, we're gonna support that notion. If it's two to two, it goes down, there's no point in making the motion. So. Let's have a conversation and decide, do we wanna put a motion forward? And we as a council support this? Or is it gonna go down?
My feeling is I. Some of some of the nuances of this project in the past was information. Was presented in a hard and fast way that we had to react to either certain timeframes, certain dates. You know, specifics that were presented as hard and fast, so my preference would be. I I like every aspect of this project, including some flexibility. Um going into the future and. Does that need to include housing? I don't know, but I would I would feel more comfortable. Knowing their support to trust the process and move it to the next step. To delegate the authority to our city manager and staff. To take that endorsement and move forward and ensure or or see what flexibility there is to. Uh create and ensure value for South Burlington taxpayers and community members.
I love that notion, but the landowner has said they have a hard stop.
I think we've reacted to hard stops before and I I think it is in our better interest. To allow staff to work with the partners to come back with a recommendation that supports. What we've heard tonight and really understand if there's any flexibility. Some of we've which we've heard from from the Ron Housing Board. Uh Conservation Housing Board and if if it's a hard stop from neat. Then that that's the restriction and we'll we'll hear that recommendation back.
I think that's the only way to go at this point. You support it too, Mike? Do you need a motion for that? Or is it just direction enough there?
So I guess I don't need a motion, but I need Tom to be willing to do that, so. I guess I would turn it back.
Yeah, I guess I got a question for Elizabeth. I don't I don't understand what you're saying. I truly don't. I respect what you're saying, but I don't understand it.
I I feel like. You know, this is, the council itself has not been involved in. Active negotiations. There was a delegation with some guardrails that were published by council. And the partners. Have met and city staff kind of was brought up to speed, you know, in the October timeframe. Um so what I'm saying is, let's. Delegate it to the people who have been meeting and make a recommendation of how to make this happen. With what we've heard is your guardrails, what we've heard is a recommendation from VHCB. And what we know Habitat's feedback has been, but I think generally, the council's feedback in the letter of interest was sixteen homes. Um but there. You know, we're we're hearing there's a a potential recommendation that might allow more flexibility, which would benefit South Burlington community members and. If there's, if if it excludes housing but might include some other things, I don't. I wouldn't wanna limit the conversation to what we thought of here tonight, which is recreation. Bike path, gardens, I I would like experienced staff to come back with a recommendation to council. And and coordinate with you and with VHCB of what what that compromise would be.
I think we're. All trying to be more flexible and I I've heard offers of flexibility from the VHCB. We're trying to help out with some flexibility. We're asking NEAT. Could you possibly be a little more flexible in in this?
That that is a fair question, Tim, but if you go back when we started. We were talking six to eight homes. With common roots. We've already doubled. What we originally started out with. That process was not easy. We've been going through these negotiations with people. We've been trying to build community support. Trying to build support among the neighbors up there. Again. We've been overly flexible. And at some point. The negotiations have to stop. And we gotta move the por- the project forward. We've been at it now. For two years. Every month it goes by, I incur another cost of nine to ten thousand dollars on this project. So I've got an extra two hundred and forty thousand dollars in this project. Above what the original price is. So I think our time to act is now. Not two months from now, not six months from now. If you give the go ahead and we get VHCB, I believe your meeting's on the fourteenth?
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth. If we can get this uh resolution changed to remove additional housing, I think everything else would be. A go.
So. I I am getting worried that I'm being set up to fail again here. I, we are trying to get a budget done. Uh we have, you know, we're, I will be, I would be putting together your agenda for next week tomorrow. I'm not sure we're going to negotiate language and I'm not sure Tom's suggesting that a condition that the council might be open to. To say we support one C if the housing is only for up to sixteen units is. Something that even Tom would agree to at this point. So if he's not going to agree to that, I'm not, I think we might be at an impasse.
Jesse, I would agree to that, yes. Up to the sixteen homes, but no more.
So I think that's the question.
So. Negotiating. All the other uses that can be on. The six point two acres. Other than housing. Up to sixteen units. Does that work for you, Elizabeth?
And let's just remember, that's what's already in your letter of support, so that's already a condition the council has put on the project.
Well, the count note was was a minimum of sixteen.
No, no, I'm talking about the community uses.
Yes. Yes.
I I don't think we're that far apart listening to this, but it's not gonna be done by the by the meeting by the fourteen, by the twenty fourth. I think that's an unrealistic expectation. I think your motion to assign the staff to get something together. And but we won't happen in the next ten days. I think that's unrealistic expectation we should just be aware of.
What about if there's a motion to? Um. Put forth that this is what we're willing to do as opposed to have staff put something together. And then. The process can continue and it can be there for the twenty fourth. So if we if we do a motion that says.
Wait, can we time out for just a quick second, cuz I I think I know where you're going and I guess I wanna. Ask VHCB, is it controversial from your perspective if the council? If Tom and the city are on the same page, and I I don't know if I have three votes for this right now. But if Tom and the city are on the same page to say one C is going to be interpreted as. Public use on conserva- permit conservation on everything, public use on six acres and. Potentially affordable housing up to sixteen acres of the total parcel. Period. Is that controversial for the VHCB board? Do you need to go back to your board in January? Or are we okay now to trust the process and start moving forward through all the other things?
Um what I'm gonna tell you is that I think the way we wrote the resolution. Was designed to give Burlington, South Burlington decision-making authority. Over that, having said that, this is a project that did attract a no vote. Did hear from this representative from A and R who voted. In favor of our resolution but thought that there ought to be more housing on the parcel, so. While I think that that's likely okay, I will revisit that issue with our board on the twenty fourth and. If but if that's if that's what you're telling me the city wants to do. As the larger funder in this, I will bring that back and make sure that we are able to continue to move forward.
Is that satisfy the council?
It's I mean, I can say that. Regardless as to what I wanna do. I would much rather have sixteen affordable housing units on this property. Then. Have the landowner. Stop this project.
Right, but I think that if 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 they go back to their board and they can work this through, that gives us a path.
Yes.
Right?
But that doesn't require anything from from staff if we make this.
Right.
If we make this resolution. Or this. Motion.
Elizabeth?
Oh, I I need to hear their motion first, but what I guess what I'm concerned about here is. This is. Another. Event in the project where. You know, city staff is saying we don't have time to pull together a recommendation based on the direction we just talked about. In order to um accommodate the next meeting. And then VHCB has to. Schedule, I'm sorry, when Gus, when is your meeting?
We're meeting on January twenty fourth.
So a meeting on the twenty fourth. It, you know, what would you need to be prepared? To go to your board meeting, but we're talking about between. Now and the twenty fourth anyway, right in our budget season, so I I'm trying to. Make sure we're not being. Backed into um. A less. Flexible. Agreement. Accom- you know, I understand what you're trying to do, Laurie, but I'm a little bit concerned. A resolution that's that doesn't. Um preserve some of that flexibility on other uses. Isn't considered.
So if we if we don't. Come up with something. That. VHCB can re- respond to that respects what the landowner. Has said they require.
And and what we sort of require.
And what we've already required.
Right, and and in lieu of our open space fund.
Yes.
Warning.
Um. If we don't come up with that tonight. I'm hearing that. That's gonna be the end of the road for this two-year process. It doesn't mean that we as a council can't. Come up with another concept and repetition. The property owner. But it sounds like we are at a an inflection point tonight. Whether it's. Whether it's arbitrary and being forced by Tom or not. He has said to us. We have to decide whether we're willing to accept sixteen units of housing. As the maximum number of housing units. To make this deal happen. Or not. Is that correct, Tom?
Correct.
So let's not, let's not banter around about it, let's say. Yes, we can accept it, move ahead on that basis. Or no, we're gonna scuttle the deal. And then we can try and put together some other deal. But I don't wanna waste Jesse's time. And everybody else's time. Going to try and negotiate something that we've been told is non-negotiable.
One C is the major sticking point.
Yes.
That's the major sticking point. They're gonna go back and talk to their board on the twenty fourth. They've had a lot of input from us. And from NEAT and from our. Uh city attorney, right, and and their own. So let's, I think we need to let that process play out. Right?
I agree with that.
With with the caveat that. If they need to take a little bit of that six acres to make the sixteen units, so be it.
Yes.
Right. That makes sense, but the maximum is sixteen, alright? Can we do that, at least agree on that?
But tonight, we need to agree that we accept. Tom's limit of no more than sixteen units of housing. In this project.
Right.
And if we don't accept that, we don't have a project.
Uh I understand, so I I support it, you support it.
I support it. Can you guys support? That. The landowner has said, I'm only gonna do sixteen units. You can talk all you want. But this is what I've put forward and I'm trying to give this gift to the community, will will you go along? That's where we are tonight. Am I summing that right up, Jesse?
I mean. I, you know.
That's what we're hearing.
I think from the city's point of view, this is not a dead deal. From VHCB's point of view, this is not a dead deal. I think that's what. Tom is saying, if it's more than sixteen houses ever and forever, it's a dead deal. I don't mean to put words in your mouth, Tom, but I think that's what you're saying. And so I think that is.
That's what he said. I agree.
So if on, I this is, I've never had this happen before where a developer is saying to an elected body. Go or no go like this, this is. This is incredibly bizarre to me.
Yeah.
But if that's what the landowner is saying to you, then. I I I think it's a really unfair position to put elected officials in.
I I agree with that. I feel like um. We represent. The entire community of South Burlington and as much as I would like. This project to move forward. I feel like um we would not be doing our. Due diligence to our community to.
Well, I just throw.
I'm struggling, I'm struggling with this cuz I I. I'm struggling with this cause I, I, yeah, I'm.
Let me throw one other thing out for this. This project still has a long ways to go to completion. Anywhere along that way, there's the potential that we're gonna come to a different hard stop. So just because we say we accept only sixteen. Doesn't mean that there aren't many other avenues as we go down this road to say this project isn't gonna happen. But if we don't accept the sixteen now. We are back at square one. So it's not like. You mean, he might be joking us?
No, I, I was saying that we have, we also, you were talking about. You know, principal soup, the office, the principles of how we spend the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So maybe this is not the route that goes to maximize the housing that we want, maybe we don't get that. But you know, that's no less important on how we spend our taxpayers' money. And then how he spends the money. I fully respect his right, I do not question his right. He has every right to make the proposal he was. I just regret that the process had not started in a different way and I think a lot of these issues could have been worked out. In advance and we'd have much more colang- language. We're constantly running against, this is the deadline, decisions have to be made now. You know, sh- shotgun information, drinking out of a fire hose, make a decision. Let's do it, this is the time to make the decision. And then we find out that that deadline is, is not the case. So to do due diligence is to basically go have uh the, 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 this, the, the, the city experts. I'm clearly no expert in these things to say, this is what incurred. If we did just keep it sixteen length, sixteen, these are all the other maximal uses that we could do. Is it active recreation, is it et cetera? And then to basically go back and say, you know, if we do this, we will still get X, Y, and Z. We will also save so much more money on this and this that, an informed decision instead of a lot of things just off the cuff. It's, it's not a process that I'm familiar with, to be quite honest, in, in thirty years of government service.
So I do wanna reframe this for just a quick second in defense of the council and the staff to a certain extent. From this, from the prior council's point of view, my interpretation and therefore what we, what staff have been implementing. Is this was always a dual goal project. This was always a housing project and this was always a conservation project. I don't think that's, it's unfair, I think, to say that it was a singular project from the city's perspect- from the city's perspective. It was not, it was always a dual goal project. The ultimatum, we've been here before, I think it's really unfair to elected officials. Tom has a choice. As well as you have a choice.
Yeah.
We can take no action tonight and he can go back and make a landowner's choice that he wants to make, that could be staying at the table with us, that could be doing something else. My hope is at a minimum, we're staying at the table with V H C B and Habitat for any future projects we as a city want to do with them. And, you know, hopefully we'll hear in writing from the landowner at some point what he's willing to do. Um, and hopefully we've given him a path forward to say this is some of the parameters within which this. These four counselors would be willing to move forward.
Because at this point, we have a, a two to two impasse.
Which is, which is, which is going down.
Well, with the now doing, going anywhere, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So I, I um. I totally understand, Mike, what you're saying about the process and about not wanting to be. Here, I totally understand that it's an unfair place for us to be.
But, but keep in mind, we, this has been going on for a year with city council, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Um, and. We had a four to one vote that sixteen units of housing was acceptable to move forward with. And um sixteen units of affordable housing is where we are. And. We have all kinds of other negotiations we can do around one C in terms of utilization of that land. But the sixteen units of housing we have. And it's a commitment for it. I don't understand why sixteen units of affordable housing doesn't work for the three of us now. When it did, when we passed the resolution a few months ago. We have the sixteen units of affordable housing that we won't have. And that's what we, that's what we said we wanted to move forward with. Can we say we're willing to move forward with those sixteen units? And that being the limit.
One of the, one of the options that V H C B offered in C was. Leaving open the possibility for future affordable housing or other appropriate community uses and. My understanding from tonight was really giving South Burlington the flexibility to make those decisions, but potentially putting. A timeframe on it, so in ten years was mentioned, is there a timeframe that could be on that that said? Twenty years and then evaluate.
That's a question for the landowner, the landowner I think said no.
So again, this is the unusual part of this development project. So if, if we're at an impasse. Uh, we don't wanna respond to an ultimatum as a body. Go back to Elizabeth's original suggestion of give me some guidance about. What you would like to see in a project you can support. I will do my best to convince Tom to talk to me some more and come to a deal. And we will bring you back something in at, in your February meetings.
It's a great idea. I just don't wanna waste anymore of your time, Jesse. And.
Well.
If this is where we. What?
Me too, but I.
If this is where we really are, then let's just accept that we can't, we can't, we can't meet the terms.
But hold on a second, so do you, do you support that?
Don't really think you're that far apart. I think Jesse's recommendation, I, I think our problem is we just need a little bit more time and if. Tom can push us into February to get, get together and have these dis- discussions, I don't think we're that far apart. Meeting what you're wanting and what then what Elizabeth and Mike take to get to you ask, from what I'm hearing, we're just asking for a couple more weeks.
Okay.
And that's on the landowner, obviously.
And we need V H C B to go to their board.
Yeah.
That's important. Do you agree with that?
Uh, yes, but we will not be ready for V H C to go to, well, you could go to your board and talk about whatever you'd like. I don't think it'll have clear direction from the council by your January board meeting.
That's what I was afraid of, yes. As I said, I read one C to say that we wanted the city to be able to make. A decision and you may make a more restrictive decision than what our board discussed. I do wanna. Let them know that that's where things seem to be going. Um, but I think that's how one C does read. But um, but tonight you're deadlocked on that question as well, so. As Jesse said, the, the guidance, what the city actually wants is a little bit muddy.
I guess they.
So I got one more, one more take on it, which is I think, I think I hear that if the city has. The authority to make a stricter interpretation. That's something that we could still do down the road as this moves forward. I don't know if that would give you enough confidence to be able to say I'll keep moving forward, knowing that. That as we get closer and closer, the city can say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna put this restrictive covenant on, on the six point two acres.
I think V H C B sees their position in this process at, at this point, right? And it's a real critical one, so you, you, your board needs to li- to think very carefully about how. Much of a balance there is between sixteen units and a huge amount of conservation on this property for the city of South Burlington. In terms of one C and what that means for us. And that's all I can say.
Thank you.
And we really need a break.
Yeah, one more comment.
Sure.
Jesse, I don't want you to think it's an ultimatum. I'm not making an ultimatum to the city. We've been at this for twenty four months. We agreed in September sixteen homes. I'm not coming here out of the blue saying this or that. I'm just saying that what we agreed upon, I'm holding to. My word on that. Okay, there is no ultimatum. It's just holding to what I originally agreed to. That's all. So don't take offense, you know, if it comes off like an ultimatum, please don't.
I, fair, I'm not taking offense. I'm trying to get my counsel to something that they agreed to and. Negotiating like this in an open meeting across the table from a developer puts them in a position where they're feeling like. They have to make a go-no-go decision. What I'm not sure a go or no-go decision, well, one, I don't think we're gonna get to a go or no-go decision and I don't think it's um. An appropriate thing to ask elected officials to on the fly negotiate, you know, we didn't have anything in writing, we didn't know what you were gonna say tonight. So to come in and say you will or will not continue to talk to us about it. Is, that's what I'm reacting to, is giving them, giving us as staff the ability and time to put together a good recommendation. For them to be able to say yes to. Wanna keep going? Over the next couple of weeks, not tonight, but. Okay. That's a yes in my book.
So I think a lot of people need a break because we're like an hour past our normal break time. Um, do we?
I just wanna thank the V H C B for all their efforts trying to pull this together. And again, extend my appreciation to the landowner.
And I wanna thank everyone for keeping talking. I think we will get there, but I thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it. We're gonna take a five minute break. Well, he'll be here soon. If he's not here, we'll just strike the uh agenda item. Just kidding, he's here. Okay. Uh, so we're going to go to item ten, we're going back. From twelve to ten, which is. Uh, discuss a potential ballot item for town meeting day that amends the penny for paths program. With Colin McNeil, city attorney. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. And you'll see in our memo with, that we do outline that you do have the ability to put a ballot item on the ballot. Uh, that amending the penny for PaaS tax would require a public vote. Uh, and then, so we proposed some language um there for a potential ballot item, if this is the direction you want to go. The schedule would be that you would just approve this, this item to be on the warning. Um, and you would approve it on the warning. Um, the same as you do for the warning for the, the town meeting day or the, the city meeting, annual meeting. Um, and that requires um. Posting and publishing, it requires notice not um. Not more than forty days and not less than thirty days before the, for the public vote and you're also gonna have to have an informational meeting that takes place. Prior to the town meeting day where this is talked about um by city staff to explain. So I, I, I know we're gonna have public comment. I, I, I like this, I would um. Um, suggest that we amend it slightly to say that the um. Ballot item be amended to say that the city can use up to twenty percent of future tax proceeds, up to twenty percent. Um, for maintaining bike pen infrastructure. It doesn't mean we would use any of it. But it means that we'd have the flexibility, we'd have the ability to look at our capital improvement plan. Um, judge the rate of grants we're getting, judge the rate of new infrastructure being built, whether it's sufficient, whether it's insufficient. Compare that to um how poor existing infrastructure is and does it make sense to hook up? New, brand new infrastructure to poor infrastructure that's not usable. We'd have that flexibility. To make those determinations and I think those determinations are really important and I'm comfortable leaving that to discretion of a future council. To, to make those determinations with that flexibility. So I would be in favor of putting this on the ballot with the amendment to say. Up to twenty percent of future tax proceeds.
Mr. Smith. Counselor. Counselor Smith.
Are we in Washington? In theory, I agree with you, Andrew. I am concerned that we have, uh, if I understand correctly and either Erica or Jesse. May be able to answer this question for me, but it's my understanding that the penny for PaaS funds. Uh, that all of those funds have already been allocated to the C I P projects that we have through twenty twenty seven. Um, and if in fact, all the money that we have raised or are raising with pennies for paths. Is allocated to existing projects that we are planning on. I don't wanna take away from that for maintenance.
Well, we don't have to, we don't, we don't have to. I mean, we can word it such that.
That we may.
Up to.
Yeah, I understand.
Up to, cause it, it doesn't say we would take away from existing, you know, projects, but.
What I was gonna say is if, if in fact those funds are, are already allocated. I would encourage us to hold off on this. Until we know that there are excess funds to be able to go somewhere else, but can you answer that question for me, Erica?
Absolutely. Uh, Erica Wallen again, deputy director of capital projects. So uh, the way that the C I P is set up right now. Uh, we, so we would be collecting until F Y twenty nine is when the current ballot is. Uh, good for the way that the C I P is right now, we would have about a six hundred and five thousand dollar. Balance if we spend exactly as the C I P says. Um, and your, the current C I P uh then continues to spend down that balance. Until F Y thirty two. So it takes a few years after we finish collecting to allocate it towards um. Additional projects that have been identified in the C I P.
Okay, that's a little confusing to me.
So we, each year we are not spending the amount of revenue that's coming in. Given the way that the C I P is, so we are, uh, our balance is growing.
But the, but the projects that are allocated in the C I P will use all of those growing funds.
Yes, by F Y thirty two, the balance uh is fairly low, pretty much zero.
Let me ask this question, and you were talking in one of your memos about the um, the C L A, right? And at what point? So, so the, the penny for path ends in twenty twenty nine?
Uh, F Y twenty nine is the last year.
Is the last year.
Collecting.
So is it possible that we get reassessed before twenty nine?
So it is possible, our C O D is actually going in the. The reverse direction from requiring a reappraisal. So we're actually getting better in the reappraisal world of things. Um, it is true that as our property tax goes up.
Right.
Um.
That collection goes up.
Well, no, that's not true. It's just the assessed value. Um, as the, sorry. But as new parcels come online, um, as values of homes go up.
New homes.
New homes go up, like as homes are improved and that grant list growth goes up.
If grand list grows, the penny grows.
Right. I will say that since we started collecting in F Y twenty, the first year, the one cent brought in about three hundred and five thousand dollars. And in F Y twenty five, that will be about four hundred and twenty. For reference, looking back at the life of penny for.
The big shift was in twenty one when we reassessed.
So it just goes back to my concern about this is that the voters approve these monies. To increase our pedestrian bike and path network. And if we take from that money to repair what we already have. We are taking away from the intention that the voters had when they, when they signed on.
That's why you'd have a new vote. But just to, to talk about the C I P, I mean, uh, uh, I mean, this probably is always going to allocate under the C O P. I mean, we're talking about things that are. Four, five, eight years out. Um, you don't know what those projects are with the contribution, how much grant money we'll have. Um, the intent of this would just be to give us a little flexibility to determine that at that point in time, three, four, five, eight years out. It's a, I mean, it's, it, it's just a planning document, it's not a committed document.
I, I would tend, uh, I share uh Lori's concern. I think the intent is, uh, the objective is to, to finish our network. Uh, and we don't yet have a real sense of what is that gonna entail. And I think it would be premature to put this uh to the ballot. I would be more comfortable a year later or something. When we've had an opportunity to have the active uh, uh, trans- uh, transportation plan. That we will see on the February where we have a clear assessment of the sidewalks. Where we, we've, as we were talking earlier, fusing all that together with the uh, objective set out in the. Um, s- s- safe ra- routes to school. We all know about the airport. Does it really build it uh, next year? We'll know more about some other business developments. And I think at that point, we should, if we do that, we basically. Explain to the population what it means and the context within what it means. Because right now, I think people are going to say. Oh, of course we'll spend some of this money. And I know you say up to, I think there'll be a tendency to always go there. And it will detract from what is the real intent is, which I think is to move this forward as quickly as possible. So I, I would say that the population is. We're not really going to be able to even inform them. You say it's an informed decision. You know, this is, this is last minute ballot. Not really able to have people understand what the trade offs are or what this means.
When you build an asset, it always is gonna have maintenance and maintenance costs ongoing forever, right? When this was first proposed and, and I, I wasn't on council then, right? Um, it would have been better if it had said, you know, let's say five or ten percent for maintenance and ninety percent for, for brand new construction, right? So that the tail is finally keeping up to date with, you know, the tree roots that grow underneath the bike paths and stuff like that while you're building and making new connections as well. This is just a simple tweak to give us the ability to say up to twenty percent for the net, for the last few years. So that we can go repair stuff that needs to be repaired, because while you're building new stuff, you got old stuff that needs to be fixed.
And again, it's the same as, I think we, we moved this to next year.
But Mike, all the things that you articulated as um, things that could. Require use of funds are the exact reason why we need the flexibility this year. All those things are gonna come in in the next month, two or three. And we're gonna see the sidewalk assessment. We're gonna see the active transportation plans. We're gonna wish. We had a little bit of funding flexibility to address those things instead of we would fund the ballot next March. Then you're missing a whole budget cycle and we're just sitting here with our hands tied, um, not be able to, and not, we don't have to. If those things come in and we decide that, you know what, actually it's fine. Um, we don't need to address infrastructure issues in our, in our current path and we don't have to. We don't have to.
You're the big proponent of, of giving things to the voters. Here's your opportunity.
Okay, well, you go back to giving the other thing I wanted to put to the voters. We'll make a fair swap here.
So I have a quick question during the. In our developed budget, didn't we add some additional money for uh, path maintenance?
From Harper.
Yes, but that's been added. We just added that. So we have additional funds that we've added to the budget for this year for maintenance. So, um. I would. I'm not opposed to this, but I think it would make sense to wait till we see the opens, I mean, the active transportation and everything.
If we get this on the ballot and it, and it passes, we'll have the flexibility and you'll have a five member council that decide how much of the twenty percent you want to use. Period.
Okay.
You can use zero.
I understand.
You know?
I understand. Um, and I know that, I know that that's been done with the open space plan.
Do you need to ask for a motion on, on this language, the ballot language?
Do you wanna hear from public first? Just offer one piece of feedback.
Okay.
To me, three weeks before ballots have to be printed to be mailed out. Is not appropriate to be, I, I don't disagree with any of the rationale. We're three weeks before ballots have to be printed for mailing out. So I, I don't feel like.
What's, what is the three weeks versus nine weeks versus twelve months? What difference does that make?
There's been no discussion with the public.
We have one right here.
Well, my, my, I, I guess my point is I don't disagree with anything anyone's saying. I think it can be done next year. With a little more planning, that's all. And, and there may be some options that could come forward around other funding is, do we need to be thinking about? A penny plus for pass. I, I don't know.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, I know.
Yes.
I mean, it's. Fair enough.
Yeah. Wow, that's, 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 that's a real.
Can we hear from the public?
Yeah. Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak on this?
Hello, public.
My name is Bob Britt, three Adams Court. Um, yeah, I mean, it took us six months to educate the public. With the initial ballot initiative. Um, that said, so I want to just state unequivocally that I think that the proposed ballot item related to using penny for paths funding for infrastructure maintenance. Is misguided. When I and others worked to approve the penny for path ballot initiative back in twenty eighteen. It was the result of frustrating frustration getting city councils to fund any new bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Over a number of years, even though bis- the bicycle and pedestrian committee through public meetings. Had heard from residents their desire for over sixty five new shared use paths, sidewalks and crosswalks for safety. Recreation and transportation purposes. The council at the time, the councils at that time were unable or unwilling to fund. This public demand for these capital projects. Therefore, an organization, a community organization, the Friends of Walkable and Bikeable South Burlington. Came up with this penny for path ballot initiative. The wording of the original ballot initiative was purposeful to restrict it to. New infrastructure as it was foreseen that future councils would try to usurp these funds for maintenance and other operating costs. As you are now contemplating. The committee was advised by then city staff members like Tom Hubbard. That the funding for new infrastructure would continue to be diluted if the ballot measure was not restrict- restricted in such a way. These funds were never meant to pay for operating costs. Next thing we know, you'll be using penny for path funding for painting, crosswalks and striping fog lines. Instead of funding our needed active transportation capital projects. Have you thought about how you will fund the fourteen projects in the F Y twenty six C I P? By taking penny for pass funds away to fund operating costs. All the penny for pass funds through the end of the ten year life of the tax are already allocated to these projects. Where will the twenty percent gra- grant matching funds come from for those projects if you use these funds for maintenance? Should we not fund the missing sidewalk segments on Williston Road so that workers can safely walk or bike to Beta Technologies? Or the crosswalk at Sog Bird Road across Dorset Street? To be used to safely get to the middle and high school, Veterans Memorial Park and the city center? Or the shared use path on Queen City Park Road so that residents can safely get. To Red Rocks Park and connect with the Burlington Path System? Or the Kimball Avenue Shared Use Path over the Potash Brook for workers to safely commute to Technology Park and on Logic? What about all the future bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure that needs funding upon the future reauthorization by voters? Of the penny for paths tax if not alternately funded? This doesn't even address parents' new desire for additional paths, sidewalks and crosswalks to create safe routes to school. Penny for paths funds should be held sacred for such future capital funding. This council must be brave and pass on the temptation to take this capital funding from operating expense per- for operating expense purposes. The penny for paths funding should remain pure for funding future shared use paths, sidewalks, crosswalks, R R F Bs. Bollards, weight finding and safety signage, et cetera, as was approved by voters in twenty eighteen. The safety of vulnerable users of our transportation system and the. Filling of the gaps in this system are critical to accomplishing the city plan twenty twenty four. Transportation goals of truly creating a walkable and bikeable city. With all the climate change mitigation, health and quality of life benefits. That penny for paths capital provides. I implore you not to rob Peter to pay Paul. Thank you.
So Stropple, who, who wants to pass this? This article? Okay, well, I guess we have a feeling that.
Next year.
Oh, we're gonna get the same story next year, I know.
You probably will.
Yep, yep. Okay, I hear it can't kicking down the road. Okay, well, we will talk about this again another time. We will, and I think we probably will talk about other pennies as well, you know, I, I think, just so you know. Uh, moving on to.
Thank you, Colin.
Yes. Thank you, Colin.
I'm glad we got you spinning your wheels again.
Moving on to item eleven.
Or I do need to tell on Colin. Colin is extraordinarily bad at taking vacation. And I think he came in for a day during his planned vacation to do this research, among other things.
Ouch.
Sorry.
Well, file it away because you won't have to do the research next time, right? It's already done. There you go.
Our apologies.
Thank you, Colin.
So item eleven, hold a first reading of an ethics investigation enforcement ordinance in response to the state's new municipal ethics statute. Potentially set a second reading and public hearing for February third, twenty twenty five at seven P M and consider appointing. A liaison to the state ethics commission and a designated and alternate complaint recipient, Colin McNeil, city attorney.
Thank you, counsel. Um, before you was a memo, um, with a presented draft ordinance for your review at first reading. Um, as it was alluded to earlier in this meeting, uh, the legislature last year passed a new municipal code of ethics. Uh, that municipal code of ethics went into effect on uh, January first of twenty twenty five, so just uh, last week. Uh, but we are now, with no action taken on our part, it is now law and we are uh, subject to it. So it is our new. Uh, municipal code of ethics that we must abide by. Uh, as part of that uh, law that was passed. Um, the statutes required us to do a couple of things. One was to. Uh, by either uh, personnel policy or policy, um, or rule. Create a mechanism by which we uh, accept complaints, investigate complaints and enforce, enforce um, complaints that have been uh, substantiated. Um, in looking at the options, we reached out to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Um, and in talking with them, uh, it was clear to us that the only option available is really adopting ordinance. Uh, because the number of employees and municipal officials that this new law applies to is broader than. Um, one, rulemaking really isn't clear for municipalities. We don't, we really don't have rulemaking authority, so we're looking at personnel policy. Uh, personnel policy obviously doesn't cover the council or elected officials that only cover city employees. So the only. Uh, effective mechanism by which we can uh, comply with the statute and do what the statute requires is to adopt an ordinance. Uh, so that is one of the things we have done. We have put together an ordinance. Uh, based on the recommendation by Vermont League of Cities and Towns. They did a little, most of the legwork here in putting this ordinance together. Uh, we did some work to kind of modify it for our own purposes. Um, but the idea was, in talking with them, is it's best to have a uniform approach to a uniform law. Uh, that other municipalities are doing. So that's why they put it together and that's why we kind of adopted, uh, for the most part, what they put together. The other requirements of the statute are the, we are, uh, the council is required to choose a liaison to the uh, state ethics uh, commission. Um, from the city. Um, and that is, that's an obligation that we have to do. Um, and we also have to, the council also has to pick a designated complaint recipient. Um, in working with the League of Cities and Towns, um, we have, uh, and it makes a lot of sense. Uh, also included a, an, an alternate, alternate to the designated complaint recipient. So the designated complaint recipient would be the individual. Who is a uh, elected official or city employee who accepts complaints of alleged violations of the municipal code of ordinances. Um, or municipal code of ethics and. Then reports back to either the council or the city manager, um, to determine how best those should be dealt with. Um. In some instances, that designated complaint recipient is not available, either on vacation, has a conflict of interest. Many different options avail, like would make that person unavailable. Um, in those instance, instances, or if a complaint is actually made against the designated complaint recipient. We need to address that situation. So we included what isn't required by statute, which is an alternate. Designated complaint recipient who would receive complaints in those instances and then conduct an investigation. Um, and so that is what's before you. We have an ordinance that's before you. We have uh, a choice to pick a liaison to the council. Or to the state ethics commission. We have a choice to pick a designated complaint recipient. Uh, and we have uh, an alternate. One thing to keep in mind when you are, you know, we, uh, an interesting question came up today. Um, was. Right as we, as we proposed it, the designated complaint recipient would be the city attorney, would be myself, uh, but it would be the position of city attorney. Um, but the city attorney also has another role, which is to advise the council on how to comply with the municipal code of ethics. Um, and so obviously if the, the city attorney is in a position where it. That position is advising, providing advice to a particular counselor or a particular person on whether there's a conflict of interest or not, that. That position can no longer uh, be the one who investigates a complaint that comes in later. Um, so in thinking this through, there's a couple of different options to, to deal with this. Uh, one, you can stick with the plan as, as we proposed, which is, uh, the city attorney would be the designated complaint recipient. Who, if that, if, for instance, if. The city attorney was someone who provided advice to someone and then received a complaint, that would be a conflict of interest. That person, the city attorney would then back away and hand the matter off to the, the alternate. Um, the other alternative is just keep the city attorney totally out of it. And you appoint someone different uh, as the, as the complaint recipient. Um, and someone else as the complaint, the alternative complaint recipient.
Can I have a question? When you, when you say an alternate, uh, would that, could that in theory be the other person in your office? Or is that again, a questionable practice because you are his supervisor and that would create a perception of. In, you know, unwillingness to say, oh, my God, you gave him wrong advice and you're all sorts of me.
I, I think one, one, one thing, Counselor Scanlon, is that, that we hold ethics in very high regard, uh, both myself and Jared do. And I think anyone that you would hire would also do the same. I think that. What the best practice would probably be and the way we've set it out is that that alternate is the, the deputy city manager. And that's the deputy city manager, if, would likely have to utilize, would likely want to use council. And could turn to the, if it, if I had given advice, the city attorney had given advice. The city, deputy city manager could turn to the deputy city manager and say, were you involved in this at all? And if no, perhaps the deputy city manager could advise the deputy city. Deputy city attorney could advise the deputy city manager on how to proceed. Uh, and if that's not, and if. And if the deputy city attorney does not feel comfortable to be involved in that process, we would use outside counsel on that.
Because ultimately we need to legal investigate any of these, any allegation that may come forward.
It's not mandatory, but it's often, you're, you're going to be interpreting a, uh, a statue and it's often helpful to have an attorney on board.
Is it required for us to receive a training, specific training?
Absolutely, yes. So, uh, as part of the new municipal code of ethics, um, one of the criteria is that as. Uh, that counts, that, that training be received. And so the, the state commission on ethics is going, is obligated to provide that. Uh, and we're obligated to work with the, the state commission on ethics to, to help you do that. Um, currently, right now, in the memo, you'll see that, that there's a, a listing that, um, is a little behind the times. Because at the time of writing, uh, the state commission had not yet posted on its website and, and interactive training. Uh, that is now available on the state's website.
Okay.
That apparently according to the state's website takes about fifty five minutes. Um, I would like to confirm with them that that's the training that is required to check the box for the statute, for the, for the statute. Um, because we are required to maintain a record of who's received training. Um, and who hasn't received training and, and make sure that, um, everyone who is currently in office right, a municipal officer right now receives training by. I believe September thirtieth of twenty twenty five. Uh, so we have some, we have a big window to do it, but.
Um, I, I listened to that fifty five minutes. It's actually very good.
Now, were there questions at the end?
No.
You don't get graded? There's no passing score required?
There's review, review, yeah.
Okay, alright.
So are, are you suggesting, Colin, we do that individually as counselors?
I think, I think we'll, we'll provide future guidance on that, but I, I do suggest you do that. I think every, I think it would be helpful because this is now the law of the land. That would be very helpful to take advantage of the tools that the state has provided to us. That would be very helpful to take advantage of the tools that the state has provided to us and and to educate yourself. If you have time to utilize those tools, I think would be very helpful. I I intend to to review it when I have a chance.
Just friendly amendment, though, I do think we're gonna want a more formal process to track who's taken it. So we're gonna want, we're going to. I would imagine develop some kind of thing that we ask our appointed officials and our elected officials to sign, you know. Confirming that they've taken it, blah, blah, blah. So feel free to watch it anytime, but more to come as Colin says.
Is it possible just, at least federal government, they did add what you were alluding to, you had to do the review and you had to get eight out of ten review questions correctly to do it. But another thing was, once you did it, uh, and you finished it, because you have to answer the questions, I assume, in the review.
No.
Oh, you don't. See, if you answer the questions, then it says form done and there's a record that you, okay. Oh, that's unfortunate.
Yeah, my son recently took a lifeguarding exam, um, and it required a lot of going through and then make sure you pay attention the whole time. Because it, you have to check boxes every once in a while. I don't believe that this video does the same thing. It's just a honor system video to educate yourself.
So we'll hear from you about this at a future date.
Yeah, and I I will, I would plan to work with the state on how the best way to do that, but and how to report that.
So we have these three motions in front of us. Um, are we ready to?
Colin, with the um, nuance that you articulated about possibly recusing yourself with someone as for advice, are you you comfortable with these motions then as they are?
Yeah, I am. We spent a lot of time talking about it and and thinking about it today, and I I am comfortable with the way they're set up.
Who would like to read the motions?
So, um, I move that the city council pass the proposed code of ethics investigation and enforcement ordinance at this first reading. And set a second reading and public hearing for February third, two thousand twenty-five at seven P M.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I move that the South Burlington City Attorney be designated as the city's liaison to the State of Vermont Ethics Commission. And as our designated complaint recipient for accusations of violations of the municipal code of ethics.
Second it. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
I move that the South Burlington Deputy City Manager be designated as the alternative designated complaint recipient. For those instances when the designated complaint recipient is unavailable or is a subject of a complaint.
Second it. We have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright. And now moving to item thirteen, uh, review the significant agenda topics below for the council's regular meeting on thirteenth.
Um, so there, since I published this agenda, there are have been some changes to this. So next meeting, you will have your budget hearing, you'll take all your um, votes associated with the F Y twenty-six budget, general fund and enterprise funds. Uh, you'll receive the pension asset update and actuarial report. You will not receive the F Y twenty-four audit from R H R Smith. That will come on February or February third. Um, you'll receive a briefing from myself and Chief Burke on the pre-charge Community Justice Center Services. Um, you'll talk about my annual review and you will not hear about the allocation to the F Y twenty-five social services funding. Martha and I need a little more time to finalize that, and by Martha and I mean primarily me.
Sorry, can I ask you, you you had taken something off our agenda?
Oh, ask me.
Ask me. When will that, will that not?
Hopefully we'll go on on the third.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. I'm not sure if this is something that would be. Possible uh, discussion for the next agenda, if this should be under other business. I'll just mention, we can see. We're having an incredible cold slats, cold snap right now and um.
You're cold?
What?
You're cold?
I'm not cold, but I'm aware of the impact it's having on our unhoused population. And talked about this a couple of. Meetings ago and. Quote, there are some funds available to do something about this. We have ten percent of the commercial buildings in our city that are unoccupied. I don't, I know we don't own those buildings and have no control over them, but when there's a flood and people are displaced. We find emergency housing for them. This is no different. In fact, it's more extreme. It's life and death for some of these folks and um, I personally feel. That this is something we need to find some way to deal with and um, I just want to bring it forward. There may be all kinds of work being done that I don't know about, in which case I'm thrilled, but I just wanted to bring it up for conversation. And I don't know whether it should be in the next agenda item for a meeting, but I think it's a critical conversation for us to be having. At this point in time.
I'll put that under other business.
So we'll bring it up again?
And well, I mean, you want to add that as a future agenda item?
I didn't know whether it would be. Added to the discussion and possible items for the next agenda.
I mean, um. We don't know what is, there are a lot of, that raises a lot of questions, right? And.
Yeah.
There are not gonna be any answers here tonight, so.
Yeah. I think it's very important for us to discuss it somehow.
Yeah.
So the state very intentionally took over the requirement to manage housing from municipalities decades ago. Um, there is a lot going on at the state level to this end. Um, there are, well. I'm happy to write you a memo on all those things I know about. I can't do that tomorrow. So we'll not be ready for the thirteenth.
Okay.
Um. So I guess if others are interested in that, I can put that on for February agenda. I would encourage you to talk to your state reps about what the state is doing. Um.
And and what they aren't doing.
Yeah, I mean, the real challenge for this, the, you know, the state, if if we want to spend a few minutes on this, the state, um, the. Steve and I have both spent a lot of time working with our colleagues in other communities and at the state level about this. It is awful what is happening. It is a state responsibility under title. It's not under twen- title twenty-four as municipal responsibility. The challenge isn't necessarily the space to stand up shelters. The challenge is operators. So even when the state had ten million dollars to grant out to communities to create. Or to to providers to create shelter capacity, it wasn't that there wasn't, there there weren't locations or. Um, community interests, the the challenge was there were not humans to operate shelters.
Yes.
And that is a part of a much larger, also related housing crisis. Um, I don't, we certainly don't have staff who are going to operate shelters. Um, what I have said very publicly in our regional conversations about this is if we have a provider. Who would like to open a shelter in South Burlington, whether that's through COTS, whether that's through another house, C H T, another housing provider. We would be happy to partner on being a fiscal agent, be finding space, connecting with landlords. Um, to be a municipal connector and a municipal potentially funder, a municipal potentially partner. Um, but I don't think we want to take current staff off of other things to operate shelters.
I I understand that, but if one of our housing complexes caught fire tomorrow. And became uninhabitable, we would stand up a shelter for those people in an emergency situation or if.
And we may stand up a shelter, a warming shelter for eight to ten hours, not, most likely not for overnight. We would defer to Red Cross. I mean, I've done shelters for extended stays during floods, like fourteen days, but again, those are red. Red Cross managed. I think, and I was just trying to pull up the article about the cost to the state to open the Williston Shelter. They did two shelters, one in Williston, one in, I think, in Waterbury. I think it was, they were, their contract was over three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. That they were paying um, step to staff that shelter overnight. And so it's it's a dollars and cents thing.
Yeah, well.
Um, Lori, as as a possible alternative, and I know um, some of this is on the housing committee's um, agenda. But um, more on the affordable side, but I wonder, I I would be open to potentially meeting with you and Emily. Krasnow as a representative to housing, to maybe have a discussion about what's going on at the state level and how that might translate locally.
I'd I'd love to do that. I think we have a a huge.
Yeah, I'd I'd be happy to help help set that up soon.
Thank you.
Um, Jesse, at last um, council meeting, there was an item in the agenda, I think Lou Brizzi was intended to present. Information with respect to the energy revolving fund that we never went through. Can we put that on next week or some future agenda, just so we we get the benefit of that?
Could you repeat what the item was?
There was a presentation that he had put together on the revolving fund, the uh, the Energy Committee Revolving Fund or the, whatever we call it.
So, yeah, we included, he, you had asked, um, at the original budget presentation, you had, several of you had asked about. Um, how the that those dollars were reinvested.
Yeah.
Um, so as part of, he couldn't prepare for the retreat, but as part of the next meeting that the sixteenth, we attached it to the agenda. As part of your your council discussion, and we never kind of had that conversation, walked through it. So I think that's what you're asking for. Um, if, Fred, the amendment to that request, if we do that in February, then Bettina can be here.
Ready to move to item fourteen? Convenance liquor control?
I move move to convenance the liquor control board.
I second.
A motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. We're now liquor control. Need a motion to approve Roots.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the third class restaurant bar license for Roots Future L L C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Liquor control.
Repeat?
I move to come out of the liquor control board.
Seconded.
And Mike, seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now out of liquor control and we are ready, we're striking item sixteen in the agenda and we're item seventeen, which is adjourned.
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 So moved.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks.
Nope.
No?
See you next Monday.
What? What's going on? What's going on? What is your schedule now?